Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for February 15th, 2011. I'd like to welcome everyone. We have a little bit larger crowd here in person than normal, so I just want to make sure everyone that's new to the room knows that we do have staff reports on the wall to your right. If you haven't picked one up and want to follow along or read information, either the agenda itself or any of the staff reports, they are available to you. Also, if you're in particular here for the item, the public hearing about the proposed increase for the water and wastewater rate structure, there is a binder here that has all of the information in tonight's report, as well as some of the background information if you need to reference that. With that, I will ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. And with that, we will move on to Item 3, Pledge of Allegiance. If you would all please, if you can stand, join me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your public, our citizens, our nation, and our government.
Thank you all. Item 4, Closed Session Report. We have no closed session report? Is that correct? Thank you. Moving on to Item 5, Adoption of Tonight's Agenda. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion. Motion without.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Item 6, we're going to move on to Public Comments. So this is an opportunity for anyone that's here in the audience to speak on anything that is not on our agenda for later this evening. So, yes, please, if you would identify your name and you have a few minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff. My name is Joanne Bozenbar, 4435 Morris Court in Napa. I'm on the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees, and I am the representative for your district. I didn't have any opponent when I sought office two years ago, so you may not even be aware that you have someone in the district. I came by for two reasons tonight. First of all, to identify myself and be able to say to you on behalf of the board that, you know, we have major concerns about what's happening financially that's going to impact not only the K-12 system but the community college system as well, because our valley has a high percentage of seniors, and we've provided a lot of programming over the years. Some of that, you know, may or may not change. But I just wanted to assure you that we're sensitive to citizens up and down the valley. And the second reason I came tonight is to introduce to you our new president. Some of you may have met her. She's been on the job six months, came to us from Pennsylvania, and wanted to offer a few words to you as well. Dr. Edna Berry.
Thank you, Joanne.
Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you for a few minutes. I know you have a very busy agenda. As Joanne pointed out, we are faced with significant considerations as most of the nonprofit sector and the public sector in California. And I'm not coming tonight to ask you for money, so please be assured that I'm not out here with an open hat. But I would like to ask you, as you work with your constituent groups and you hear from seniors who have taken advantage of the programs that we've offered in the past, when you hear that we're going to be making changes in how we offer programs, particularly at the Upper Valley Campus for lifelong learning participants, that we are no longer able to afford those programs and services on a free basis. You already may have seen the impact of that or heard of it in the last year, but we're facing another 10% budget cut, and it could even be as high as 20%. So that's anywhere from $4 million to $8 million of our budget that will be cut out. And with it will be going many of the services that we have provided. My commitment to the college and to the community is to provide as many services as we can, as effectively as we can, and as efficient as we can. But it will require us to turn quite a number of the services into fee-based services. And so I wanted to ask for your support and your encouragement as you're hearing from your constituents who may have partaken in some of our services. Of those, we're providing, we're going to change many of our services into workforce development training services so that we can be responsive to the business community, to provide skills training to the businesses that are the high priority occupations in the Napa County. And lifelong learning at our Upper Valley Campus in particular will also change more into workforce training and skills training efforts and everything. And I know that will be sad news to many of the participants in Yountville who have come to our Upper Valley Campus, but it's where we need to put our money to provide economic stimulus to our business community. So I just wanted to give you those comments, and I'd be happy to come back sometime and lay out our greater plan, but I know you have much more important topics to discuss tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome to Yountville.
Thank you.
And to the Valley. And thank you for sharing that information.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on anything that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one else, I'll move on to Consent. Item 7, the Consent Calendar. Are there any comments regarding the Consent Calendar? And if not, is there a motion regarding the Consent Calendar?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None? Approval of the Consent Calendar. Thank you. We're going to move on now to Item 8, Presentations. And what I would like to do is just explain that we have added this as a kind of a semi-regular presentation from the Allied Council up at the California Veterans Home. And we have tonight Chairman Ed Olson, as well as Tom Sarek, who are here representing the Allied Council. I think this is an opportunity that we have to just learn a little bit more of what's happening up on the campus. And I know that what we're going to do here is, the week after the Allied Council meets, you will be coming on a monthly basis to let us know some of the issues. So with that, Chairman Olson, if you would come on up.
Thank you. I want to thank you, John, and councilmembers, for the opportunity to have the council be part of your council, so to speak. As you know, we meet once a month with our Allied Council. And for you who don't know, the Allied Council at the Veterans Home is basically similar to a city council in that we represent the members there at the home. We have a representative from each of our buildings, which varies in size from probably 130 people in one building to as, well, as small as about 35. So, all in all, we have, I believe it's 13 or 14 delegates. And we meet with them a couple of times a month, and the one main meeting we meet, and our purpose, of course, is to try to resolve problems at the home as best we can. We are an advisory body to the administrator, and our purpose is to basically take things from the members, what they feel are need to be looked at, bring it to the administrator, and she in turn brings us information which we can pass on to the members. And we meet with her, with Marcella, the administrator. We meet with her once a week on a Monday afternoon. And this is relatively new. Well, it's been going on now for a couple of years, but they never did that before. Before, it was always just the chair met with Marcella, then the chair was supposed to deliver the information to the council, which we've had, I don't know how many of you are aware of, some of our chairpeople in the history of the home, but we have had some really good ones. And we had a few that were, well, one particular that was very bad and caused a lot of problems. And the basic problem that this particular one chair caused was that, in the past, way in the past, the council and the members used to go to the legislators freely and talk with them and try to get them to change things or modify things as a legislative item. And through that, several years ago, when the fees were 55% of our income, they were able, by getting a legislative bill passed, they were able to reduce it to 47.5%. There were other things, but that was probably the biggest thing they did in the last number of years. This was, of course, great, and we had a really good relationship. I say "we," I wasn't here at the time, but they had a really good relationship with the legislators. But when this one chairperson got in charge, he kept, he was down there all the time, practically lived down there, and he was kind of a hands-on-the-shoulder type of guy. And some people were taken in by him, but it was a problem. He was finally removed from the home, actually was sent down to Chula Vista, in our other home down there, and they finally got rid of him there also. But in the meantime, what happened is the pendulum went all the way from being way over here to now being way over here. And what it did is that the CDVA felt they didn't want to get in trouble anymore, so they were going to basically say, "Well, you don't really have the right to go down there to the legislators." So what we did, we formed a group outside the council, and we had a legislative liaison group, of which Ed Warren, who is here, was the chair of that group. He's also the chair, he wears two hats, he's also the chair of our legislative group within the council. And we've been able to make some really inroads this, and I think we're going to make some major changes. We've got a bill in that was in last year, it passed, but it was vetoed by Governor Schwarzenegger, and we're pretty sure we'll get it through this year. Everybody passed it, everybody 100% passed it, but it got to his desk, he vetoed it, and they didn't try to override him because they thought it probably wasn't the right thing to do with the way politics were. So we're going to get that run through again and get it so that would allow us, without exception, go to the legislators directly. So that's kind of the big thing that's going on. We have, of course, you're aware of, the ones of you who have been in Yountville a long time and have visited our home, you're aware of that big recreation building, they used to call it Recreation Building, now it's called the Members Service Center. And they had a fire there, and because of that, part of it was closed down, and they finally got the money to completely remodel it. It's done, it's remodeled, we're in there. There's some things that are not open yet. We have a cafe situation, we're not sure exactly how that's going to work yet. The bowling alleys, they're putting all brand-new bowling alleys in there, I mean, not alleys, but the machines, the bowling machines, there's a six-lane bowling alley. So it's coming around, it's working really good. If you haven't visited over there, please come over and visit us. We have offices in that building, and we look forward to talking to all of you. And I have been a strong proponent for all the time that I've been part of the Allied Council, that we need to integrate as much as possible with the rest of the town. This makes it better for us, I think it makes it better for you folks, and we are part of the same town, and we enjoy people over there, hopefully vice versa. And it's always good to have a little bit younger group of people to visit us occasionally. And as you may or may not know, our average age, I think, over there is about 78, so you are the younger generation over here. But in any way, and I would ask for any of you that would like to, come over and visit us at our offices, we have really nice offices over there. And we're doing a lot of things. We just recently were given the, we have a TV studio, and Marcella finally said, "Well, I guess the staff isn't making things happen," so she said, "Well, okay, Allied Council, you got it." So we're running now with the TV studio, and we hope to integrate even part of that into the town, because we will have pretty good capabilities to do some great programs of a variety of types. So, hope you'll come over and visit us, and when we come again, please think about some questions you might ask us too, what's going on, what has gone on, and anything that you would like to know, we will be glad to provide you with some answers. So, thank you. If you have any questions at this time, I'd be glad to address them.
Does the council have any questions? I know that one thing I would like to just do upfront is congratulate all your new delegates.
Thank you.
I know that you just went through an election in January.
We did.
So congratulations to all of them.
We have, there was quite a, several delegates that were already being replaced, and then they had an election, and they got a couple more. So we've got about five or six relatively new delegates, and I think they're going to be good. And we have an election for our delegates every other year. And the same thing is true of the officers, except one is, the officer's on the odd year and the delegates are on the even year. So that's kind of the way we work. And it's a great place to live. I love it. Most all, all of the members there love it. It's a great place, and please join us in any way you can. Thank you.
Now, are there any questions of council, of Chairman Olson?
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming, and we look forward to your ongoing presentations.
Thank you. And thank you for having us. I think this is a great step in the right direction.
Great. Thank you very much. And also thank you to Ed Warren, who is also here, resident of Yountville, as well as on our Parks and Community Services Commission and the Legislative Liaison for the Allied Council. So thank you, gentlemen. With that, we will move on to Item 9, which is our public hearing for this evening, Proposed Increase to the Town of Yountville Water and Wastewater Rates. And with that, shall we begin with the staff report?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Briefly, I'll provide a quick overview of where we've been. We have a presentation from our rate study consultant, and then we'll provide you an update on the Prop 218 protest process, and then we will open the public hearing. As you know, during our budget discussions of last year, we spent quite a bit of time looking at the overall financial position of the town and our enterprise. At that point in time, the council provided direction to staff to work on a plan that would return the water and wastewater utilities that were operating with significant structural deficits to a cost-neutral position. And they provided direction for staff to retain an independent financial consultant to analyze and make recommendations to the town for an appropriate rate structure that would accomplish the council's goals. Part of that rate analysis also means that they're looking at our costs to make sure that they're valid and providing you with that kind of information in the community. We began this process when the council established an ad hoc committee back in August. So it's been about a six-month process, and at this point in time, we're ready to proceed with what is known as Proposition 218 Rate Increase Hearing. The council made a decision on February 14th as to what is referred to as a maximum allowable rate structure. You provided direction to staff to send the Prop 218 notice. In accordance with California law, that notice has to be sent out, and it establishes the maximum rate that can be established, and also provides a 45-day or an even extended greater public notice process. Those notices went out in the last week of December 2010. The town held a public information workshop in January to discuss the rates. We had two participants attend. We also had an opportunity, on Friday, I ran into a gentleman that had a mix-up on the dates and had the pleasure of chatting with him a little bit and answering some of the questions that that person had. But at this point, what I'd like to do is introduce our rate study consultants, Bartle Wells Associates. We have Doug Dove and Kat Singh, who have worked with the council ad hoc committee and staff in analyzing. And with that, they have an overview of the process and the rate structure for both the water and the wastewater utilities. Again, then we'll take your questions, provide a Prop 218 protest update, and then turn it over for you to conduct the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Just as a little clarification and reminder to the public that we will be having, we'll identify protests that have been received, and we'll also have the public hearing portion of this immediately following the presentation. So I won't forget you. With that, are we electronically prepared?
Not yet.
Am I getting the stretch-it-out sign like they do at the Academy Awards?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry to say it, the Grammys, since they just were this week.
Right there.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Doug Dove, and I'm joined by Catherine Singh, and we're consultants with Bartle Wells Associates out of Berkeley, and we specialize in water and wastewater rates and fees. And we've been working with staff and the council-appointed ad hoc committee since September to look at the water and sewer rates and develop a financing plan. And we went through a number of alternatives. I think we had, I don't know, about 12 alternatives. And then we actually thoroughly looked at three alternatives for the water and three for the wastewater, and narrowed it down to the recommended rates that we're going to present today. So let me see if this works. Uh-huh. Did you do that? Okay. Okay. Our objectives were to do an independent review of the town's water and wastewater rates and finances, develop long-term financial projections, and recommend rates that recover the cost of service, are fair and equitable, and phase out subsidies from the general fund, and also phase in the rate increases as we can to help minimize the annual impact on customers' money. Again, an enterprise fund, which is the water and the sewer funds, are typically to be self-supporting, and they charge rates and fees to generate revenues to fund the provision of the service. And other examples of enterprise funds include solid waste, electricity, stormwater. It's essentially a bit like an enterprise business where you charge fees for service. And so the service includes system operations and maintenance, water purchases, capital improvement projects, repairs and replacements, debt service on loans, and also funding of prudent reserves. Just an overview of the water enterprise first. The last increase was in 2007, and you have about 769 active connections to the system. Residential accounts, including single-family, multi-, and mobile home, are about 87% of your customers. As you can see, the fund's in a deficit. The beginning fund balance for this current year was $464,000. The expenses exceed revenues, and so we're looking at a $216,000 deficit for this year, leaving us with an ending fund balance of $247,000. And the water fund's been in a deficit mode for 10 years, and it's received about $3 million in subsidies from the general fund. That's unusual. Cities generally run them as enterprises, and it's unusual to have a city subsidize the enterprises. So your water sales revenue, which comes from the fees and charges, accounts for 97% of the revenue of the water enterprise. Your annual use of, for last fiscal year, was 142 million gallons of treated water, and your average bimonthly water consumption for a single-family home is about 22,000 gallons. Your water system, you've got a system that uses rainfall runoff that's captured in the Rector Reservoir, which is owned by the Veterans Home. And that water is distributed to the town, the town pays the Veterans Home for that water. And in 2009, there was 476 acre-feet of water, or 155 million gallons of water distributed. And this year, the estimate for the budget is purchasing 510 acre-foot. And that will vary based on the weather and other factors, but the estimate is 510 acre-foot. You also have a municipal well that you've installed, and that's a backup in case something were to happen to the surface water system. You also have 6.9 miles of water distribution mains. This just shows graphically the amount that the general fund has put into the water utility. And again, it's about $3 million over 10 years, so quite a bit investment into the utility. Your water rate structure includes two components. You have a fixed water service charge, a bimonthly charge, which is based on meter size. If you have a larger meter, you pay a larger charge, and it recovers costs, like fixed costs such as salaries, supplies, and repairs. You also have a variable water commodity charge, and that has a four-tier structure where the price increases as you get into the higher tiers. And so that provides a conservation incentive, and it also recovers costs that vary based on the amount of water sold, like water purchases and electricity. This is just your current rate structure. You have charges that are outside the town that are higher than for folks inside the town. Majority, vast majority of your customers are inside the town. There are some that are outside. The outside customers pay more, as the town has been subsidizing the utility, and there's some additional costs for serving the outside customers. But you've got the meter charges and then the tiered rates. And you can see you've got right now, single-family, four tiers, and multifamily, four tiers. And then the non-residential has this uniform rate, which is sort of an average of these And so we're going to talk about that. Why are the increases needed? Well, you have the operating deficits, and the utility really needs to become sustainable and self-sustainable. It can't continue to rely on the general fund. And so we need to increase the rates to cover the deficit. And also, water purchases from the Veterans Home, the cost has increased 50% since 2007, when you lasted your rate increase. So you've had a major increase in the cost of water, and that's about half of your budget is the water purchases, and that's gone up 50%. So in addition to those two items, you also have a capital improvement program, which is about $442,000 over the next five years. So those need to be funded. We're not anticipating any borrowing on the water side. And also, your operating expenses, you know, typically there are increases in expenses, like cost of living increases, and so we're looking at 3% to 4% on that. So that's why the increases are needed. You've got a number of factors. And you can see here, this is where, what your current revenues, where they are, and you can see it's not even meeting your costs. So we definitely need to raise the rate to cover the cost of the water utility operating the system. So your water purchases, again, it's varied a bit by year based on the weather, but, you know, around 500 acre-foot per year. And the cost, as we And the cost, as we've seen, has gone up quite a bit, 500, you know, 607 and now 750. So we're assuming that that will continue to increase at higher than inflation at about 7.5%. We don't know what the Veterans Home will charge for the water, but in case they charge more than this 7.5%, there is a provision in the resolution for pass-through of that additional amount. So that will allow the town to cover that cost as well. And here's just a graphic of the capital improvements over the five years. About $442,000 for the water system. Couple of rate structure modifications that are recommended. The meter ratios, the ratio between the 3/4-inch to the 1-inch and so forth. They're not quite in line with the standard accepted American Water Works ratios we're recommending that you adopt or use the ratios that are accepted. It's a slight change in the ratios. And then the multifamily tiers for apartments, your current rates are charging most of the apartment water in Tier 4. And that's really not quite fair, so we're recommending that you go to just charging the uniform commodity rate like other non-residential customers for apartments. The outside-of-town rates, currently you charge a surcharge of 78% on the fixed charge and then a 25% on the commodity charge. And the recommendation is to just charge a 75% surcharge on outside-of-town customers to make up for the funds that the town has put in from the general fund and for additional costs that are involved in serving outside of the town. Your fixed versus variable revenue allocation, right now, you generate about 20% of your revenue from the fixed charge and 72% is from the commodity. And that is not exactly in line with your costs in the water utility. The costs are more 50/50, 50% fixed, 50% variable. And really, your biggest variable costs are the water purchase and the electricity. The rest of it is pretty much fixed, whether you use a lot of water or a little bit of water. So we're recommending that you go to a rate structure that is about 50% of the charges are going to come from the fixed and then 50% from the variable. And so that will result in larger rate increases for some customers in 2011, '12 when we switch to that structure. And namely, that's going to be folks that are like out of town, who only come once or twice a month on the weekend and don't use a lot of water. So they'll see a bigger increase because they're going to be paying that full fixed charge. The replacement fee, we, to be sustainable, we need to build in the cost of replacing the system. And so currently, you don't have any revenue built in for funding replacements. We're recommending a water system replacement fee, which will be a fixed charge and it'll ramp up over time. It'll start at $2.26 a month in 11, '12 and ramp up from there. And that will be used to fund replacement and repair of the system, of the water systems that you will hopefully not have to go to the, you know, borrowing markets. You'll have funds readily available to do repairs and replacements. The proposed water rate increases are spread out over five years. The revenue increases are 17% a year. It's significant. However, we are dealing with a deficit situation and capital needs. So as you can see, our, we're not building up a huge fund balance here, but we're at least covering our costs. And at that point, we will be pulling out of the need for subsidies from the general fund. Sample customer impacts, here's a typical single-family residence with a 3/4-inch meter and 22,000 gallons bimonthly. So currently, it's $67.84 bimonthly. And that would go to 90/74, so roughly 40, a little over $45, $45.50 roughly, per month in this year. And then it would go like $53 a month in 2012, '13. For a commercial customer with a 2-inch meter and 115,000 gallons of flow, a pretty sizable commercial customer, they would currently be paying about $390 per two months and that would go to $527 per two months under the proposed rates and then increase from there. Should be noted that your current rates, when we did a survey of single-family residential water rates, your current rates are the lowest in the area, below American Canyon, Napa, Healdsburg, Santa Rosa, St. Helena, Calistoga, and far below Hal Mountain Mutual. They're really expensive. But you know, you're well below St. Helena and Calistoga and I think this is the result of subsidizing the utility. So, okay, let's talk about wastewater. The, again, the last rate increase was 2007. You have about 628 residential units and residential accounts are 94% of your customer base. Again, we have a deficit situation, about $63,000 deficit for this current year. And it's been in that mode for several years. Your water sales reven, I mean, your wastewater charges generate about 96% of enterprise revenue. And it should be noted that you provide treatment for the Veterans Home wastewater and that's about 42% of your rate base. Your system, you have eight miles of pipe, 3/4 of a mile of force main from a pump station to the wastewater treatment plant, and 1.4 miles of gravity pipe that discharge to the river in the wintertime and also force main recycled water line. So most of your water is recycled in the summer, but in the winter, some of it does go to the river. Your treatment plant, again, is used to treat the city, the town's waste and the Veterans Home's waste. You've been recycling water for irrigation since the mid-1970s, so you're very ahead of your time. Approximately 127 million gallons generated in '09 and 87% of that was recycled, so that's Your current rates for a single-family home, it's $41.77 bimonthly. Multifamily is about 73% of that, about $30.58, and mobile homes, $30.58. For non-residential, you currently have a structure with three sets of fixed charges based on your water meter size and then a low, medium, and high-strength volume rate. And so low strength would be like churches, schools, group homes, other commercial, town use. Medium would be hotels and inns, other commercial, multi-commercial and bars. Then high strength would be restaurants and tasting rooms. A typical calculation of the current rate would, you'd have a fixed charge and then a volume charge, which is based on your water consumption. So your total bimonthly charge is a combination of those two. Why are the increases needed on the wastewater? You've got, again, an operating deficit. You've got a significant capital improvement program. The five-year total is 2.4 million for the wastewater system. And your NPDES permit requires you to upsize the recycled water distribution pumps and other system parts by December 1st, 2013. You have a deadline to get that in place. And if you don't meet that, there is a possibility, a very strong possibility of fines, so we don't want to go down that road. We want to get the project finished in a timely matter. We're also applying for low-cost loans from the state revolving fund. And to qualify for those, your wastewater enterprise has to be self-supporting. So the rate increases are needed to qualify for those low-cost monies. Also, you've got operating expenses, which are projected to increase with inflation in the future. Again, this graphically shows that your revenues are not sufficient to fund your total cost on an annual basis. There's your five-year capital improvement program, 2.4 million. Just briefly on the state revolving fund loan, it's a 20-year fixed-rate loan. We've done quite a number of them. It's based on 50% of the state's general obligation bond rate and it's currently 2.6% interest. So it's a very nice interest rate and very low costs of issuance. And the first debt payment is not due until a year after the project is complete, so that's a very nice feature. And you'll need to maintain a debt service coverage ratio of 120%, so that means you have to have a little extra revenue in addition just to the operating cost and the debt service. So we've developed our projections based on meeting those requirements. Veterans Home, they're close to 50% of your, well, they are 50% of your cost for the treatment plant. And so they fund, you know, the operating and then the capital costs as well. And so we're expecting debt service to kick in in 2014, '15 on the new state revolving fund loan. The rate structure modification that's proposed is for the non-residential, instead of having that low, medium, and high fixed charges, just have a single set of fixed charges based on meter size. And there still will be low, medium, and high-strength volume charges based on the type of discharge. But for the fixed charge, there would just be one set and that is a lot simpler and a lot more accurate. These, again, these charges will be aligned with the new American Water Works Association Also, similar to the water system, we're recommending a wastewater system replacement fee to fund replacement of wastewater system pipelines and the treatment plant. The current annual transfer of $50,000 is not sufficient to fund these projects and replacements and repairs. So we've developed a set of system replacement fees that need to be levied to fund replacement so that you'll have a sustainable system. Again, the wastewater rates are phased in over five years. It's about 16.5% per year and we're building up a little bit of a fund reserve, but not much. Really, we'd like to see these to be higher, but we're trying to keep the rate increases as low as possible. For a typical single-family home, the sewer service charge plus the replacement fee, you'll see the current rate is $41.77 bimonthly. That would go to $48.66 bimonthly and then $56.66, $76.76, and $89. And that's for two months, so divide it by half for the monthly charge. Multifamily, okay, multifamily similarly, you'd have a similar progression, same rate increases percent-wise, and then also commercial. Again, your sewer rates are among the lowest in the area and even with the proposed increases, you're still going to be relatively low. And these are current rates, so I wouldn't be surprised if they didn't increase by 2015 as well. So the good news is your rates are low and even with the increases, you're still going to be a moderately low cost. So you're doing a good job at keeping the cost down, but can't continue to subsidize the utility from the general fund. Just briefly, miscellaneous fees for account establishment, shut-off notices, meter installation, fats, oil, and grease waste discharge permit, we're recommending those set of fees based on the actual cost that we project to provide those various services. Briefly, how the town is controlling costs, controlling labor and benefit expenses through agreements that have no cost-of-living adjustments for two years. And there's a cap for medical insurance cost and implemented retiree medical benefit caps. Town is doing proactive efforts to reduce energy costs and will replace 35-year-old pump motors with new, more efficient motors and using grants and low-interest loans. And we're also looking at solar and methane gas recapture options and applying for grants and loans and low-cost financing for capital projects as much as possible. So in summary, the water and sewer enterprises have been operating in a deficit for years. General Fund has provided a lot of support to the water utility over the last 10 years. There's significant capital costs that need to be funded and the proposed rate increases are based on the cost of service. As I mentioned, the water costs for purchasing the water from the Veterans Home has increased 50% since '06, '07. And the rate restructure modifications are intended to make the rates more equitable. And again, you'll still be in the middle range in comparison to the surrounding region. So rate increases are never popular, but you know, it's important to pay for the costs of the services and continue to provide for the replacement and repair of those facilities on an ongoing basis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll ask if the council has any questions about your report. The first question I will ask, if you could, I know you've touched on the different impacts between multifamily and single-family and commercial, but given our demographic and the fact that we have two senior mobile home parks, could you explain how the calculations work for those folks? Because I know there's, it can be pretty complicated and confusing. Multifamily, basically condominiums and apartments are treated a certain way, mobile home units are treated a certain way, single-family residents. So if you could maybe just embellish on that.
Sure, yeah. On the wastewater side, the mobile home parks, you know, there's a flat charge. Residential, it's about 73% of the single-family residence rate. So that will go up in lockstep with the single-family rates, but it'll still be that 73%. On the water side, the fixed charges, the fixed monthly charge, typically a large, like a mobile home park may have one or two meters and so that'll be a larger meter. And so those charges will go up, but the consumption charges will probably not go up as much because we're shifting more to the fixed cost in that meter charge portion of the bill. So I don't see the multifamily, you know, that are in mobile home parks, for example, seeing as big of an increase as some other folks because just the way they're metered.
So if I could, a follow-up question. Again, I'm trying to anticipate some questions from some of the residents. Basically, what does it boil down to in terms of, in the mobile home parks in particular? Some residents conserving more water than others, yet it's the property owner that has the meter that then passes through the charge to the individual residents and who's controlling that fee?
Right. I believe it's the mobile home park operator that, in that case, because they would have the bill go to the operator and then they would allocate the bill among the different mobile homes. So I don't believe that's the city's allocation. We, the city, or the town, I'm sorry, the town just bills the mobile home park owner for the water. Yeah?
Thank you. Does the council have other questions of our presentation? Yes, come to number all.
Yeah, hi. Thanks again. This is really good information. A quick question, and this may be more directed towards staff, but we haven't yet seen what our rate increase is going to be from the Veterans Home. So we're assuming 7.5%, if I recall correctly.
Correct.
We have not seen anything formalized yet.
Our rate increase from the Veterans Home is done retroactively at the end of the year, which is always challenging. We've taken a conservative approach and built in 7.5%. Historic for the last five years, it's averaged 10, some years a little more, some less. So we think 7.5% is a reasonable projection based on historical knowledge. We're hopeful that it could be less. And I will share with the council and the public, the way the the way the rate structure is designed, by building that future increase in, if we've got some ebb and flow, we won't need to adjust rates. We also have the ability in the future years, for example, if our cost from the Veterans Home does not reach the anticipated 7.5%, in a future year, the council can choose not to implement the full amount of a future rate increase. So I think that's a very appropriate footnote. You know, we're certainly been working with the Veterans Home, and I know that some of the public has said, "Well, what are you doing to make sure their costs are being controlled?" And I do want to point out that the Veterans Home went through a rather significant capital improvement process over the last five years with Rector Reservoir. So hopefully, those costs are going to be leveling out, and we won't see that same level of investment causing us, therefore, to have an increase. Very similar in what we're going through with some of the adjustments to our wastewater treatment plan.
Just to follow on to that, though, Steve. Conversely, if the rates are in excess of 7.5%, the pass-through -- is it the pass-through provision allows us to recapture that so that we're not going to be short? Because if I remember reading the numbers, we're basically in the fund at about $1,000 to the positive with the water fund in years 2013, 14. So obviously, that would be an important feature that we'd want to be able to pass.
That's correct.
Okay. One question, I want to make sure I also understand. I think I do, but there's this concept under 218, I don't know if that necessarily is being addressed here, but that we're passing these rates through, that we're really doing a not-to-exceed rate here with these rate increases. We can always do less, but this is the maximum rate that the residents of the community would ultimately have in the form of a rate increase for the water component and for the wastewater. That's correct?
Correct, yes.
With the caveat of the pass-through provision that you just articulated.
Precisely. Okay. I'm going to leave it at that, because I think it's very well presented, and I trust that, you know, the community's had a chance to read the materials. It's a lot of information, but it's been boiled down, and I think it's something that you guys have done a nice job. One other question, sorry, Mayor. How many of these types of rate processes have you gone through in different municipalities? Your background experience, how many times have you done this?
I've lost count, but 20 years' worth of these, so I think probably over 100.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, our firm's been doing these for 46 years. So, yeah, we're very experienced and seen all kinds of different structures.
And I think that's good, that's good counsel or information for us to have, because this was a very well-thought-through process.
Well, I also want to share with you that more locally, City of Calistoga just concluded last November-ish. They went through their rate study process. City of St. Helena has actually started earlier than ours, and they're still going through, and they're looking at somewhere between a 55% and a 65% one-time rate increase. And you may have read a recall reading in last week's Napa Valley Register that the City of Napa just announced that they will begin their evaluation, and Napa Sanitary District, which is a special district, is also going through that process. So regionally, all around us, all of the Napa Valley entities are currently evaluating rate structures. And in all candor, there's three things that are driving that. One is the surface water, which we're dependent on in this valley, is very expensive compared to other opportunities. And secondly, we have aging infrastructure, and aging infrastructure is very expensive. Unfortunately, the smaller agencies, Calistoga, St. Helena, Yountville, we have a relatively modest customer base with which to distribute a rate increase. And I don't like to pick on others, but, you know, a good portion of our wastewater treatment plan is a result of mandatory state permit conditions. And I don't -- Mr. Dove commented lightly that fines are a possibility for failure. I shared with the council prior, you know, Lake Berryessau, one of the mutual districts up there, has faced over $340,000 in fines from the Regional Water Quality Control Board in the last two years because of operating issues. $340,000. And that doesn't do anything good or positive to improve the system. And the Regional Water Quality Board is only going to be more attentive to permit-condition violations. I also think it's important that when we look at your 2.4 million in fixed cost, somebody asked me a question, and it's a good question, which was, "Well, where else can we go? I don't, you know, I'm not a fan of debt service." Well, I want to take a look, and I'll have Kathleen can comment, but we don't have 2.4 million sitting in the wastewater treatment fund. We don't have 2.4 million sitting in our capital project improvement fund. Our balance is in the mid-million to 1. -- Kathleen, what's that number?
1.5.
1.5. And your general fund reserve is about 20% of our general fund operating, just a little over 1 million, 1,500,000. So even if you tried to cobble everything together, you don't have enough money to pay cash for what we're estimated. And the rate structure that's proposed is premised on us being successful with a state revolving fund loan, and our early conversations are very promising, and they like where we're headed with that. And we're also seeking a Bureau of Reclamation grant of 25%. So I want everybody to know that with your council's direction, staff has tried to be very aggressive on finding alternative funds and grants where possible, but that's a very diminishing market right now.
Thank you for that. Other questions of Mr. Dove at this point? Vice Mayor?
One question, I'm not sure if you're the right person, or Kathleen, you can chime in. The report says that over the last 10 years, we've subsidized, we mean the town of Yountville, about $3 million into the water fund. And if my memory is correct, I couldn't find it in today's report, that over the next five years, to keep the fund whole, we would have to subsidize another $3 million just in the next five years. Is that about correct?
No.
That may be the water and the wastewater.
No, I think, you mean if we didn't do the rate increases?
No rate increase at all.
Yeah.
I think it would definitely be over 2 million. I know we did that calculation at one point.
It's four, I think it's $500,000 or so per year.
Right, right.
That, I think, goes to that other question of where would $500,000 per year come from if this situation is not addressed? You don't have to answer that.
One last question I have, just to follow up on that. In your 20 or so years of doing this, can you estimate how many cities have been subsidizing their water and wastewater enterprises? Are they pretty rare?
It's very rare. I've seen it once before in the City of San Juan Batista, but that ended in, you know, they couldn't continue that. So it is extreme. Usually, it's the other way around. Usually, cities try to charge the utilities as much as they can to get money over to the general fund through, you know, whatever. So it's usually on the other side of the scale, but, you know, it's very unusual to see a city subsidize utility funds.
And one misconception, as far as I understand it, a misconception that I have heard is that we're doing this just to raise more money to put into the general fund or to use however we want.
Yeah.
And if you could just explain, again, the legal restrictions on what we can charge and what it can go for.
Right. The funds that are charged for water and sewer have to be used for water and sewer, and that's state law. And, you know, you charge very little for your administrative time compared to what other cities charge. All the funds will stay in the water and sewer enterprises and be used for the purposes of those systems. And accounted separately, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. And with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing portion of this, but I will also, were you going to do this?
Yes.
Identify the protests that we received?
I would like to first provide a little background on the Prop. 218 process. The Proposition 218 process established by state law provides for a property owner protest, and that, in this particular case, if there are 50% plus one of the property owners protesting, then the rates that you are considering tonight would stop, the process would completely be stopped. To date, we have received nine protests, nine written protests, eight of which are valid protesting the water, seven that are valid protesting the wastewater. And the hearing that you're about to go into also allows for the opportunity for parties to present a protest that would then be added into our protest. For the council and the public's information, 437 protests would be required to stop the council's consideration of the water rate increase, and 420 would be required to stop the wastewater rate increase. And again, the town has, as of 5:00 PM today, received nine written protests, eight valid protesting the water, seven valid protesting the wastewater. And with that, as you conduct your public hearing, if speakers have a written protest, and it does have to be written in conformance with the requirements of Proposition 218, they could submit those to the town clerk, and they would be added to our portfolio. All of the protest letters are public, and the council's been provided with not only the tally sheet that has been used in accordance with the adopted tabulation process, but copies of the actual protests themselves.
And those are also in the binder of public information that's here in the room?
That is correct.
Any other additional information before I welcome public hearing comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. So with that, I will invite members of the public to speak to this issue if anyone is interested. Anyone? Anyone? Yes, please. Please, if you would, state your name when you get up here for the record.
Dick Seabird from Hopper Creek Village, next door. I'm on the board of directors for the homeowners association. It's, we're mostly concerned with our residents on fixed incomes, how this will affect them, and if there are any possibilities for relief for some of our owners, owner residents. Secondly, we are like a home, like a mobile park, a home park. We have one meter for 42 residences, townhouses, and one for the common area, the pool and the grounds. So we are trying to think of how we might handle this more equitably and put in meters, but we don't, we don't know how to approach this. Is there any help we can get in obtaining meters? How does one go about this, if that is the best way to handle it? Because we also have a number of weekenders who are already protesting the fact that they're only here on weekends or sometimes, and they don't feel it's fair that they should pay the same rate as a full-time residence. And that's about it.
Okay.
It's mostly, we don't know where to go from here in handling this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Seabird. Once we get all public comment, I'll ask staff to answer the questions as you propose them.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to either comment or ask questions?
My name is Theodore Worcester, and I'm owner of record of two parcels, a 6645 yacht and 6645B. I'm the guy that showed up at the public hearing the day late, and Mr. Rogers was good enough to sit on the bench out there and explain everything to me for about an hour. And as a result of that, I have no protest of anything.
Thank you, Mr. Worcester. Any others? Ms. Rife, please.
Carla Rife. I too was able to talk to Mr. Rogers and to some of you, and had all my questions, mostly all my questions answered, and I have nothing to protest. I do have one thing I would like you to address, though. The, I don't know how long ago, but within the last year or so, maybe it was a little longer, we sold water rights. And in looking into the future, as these proposals are looking into the future, how would or could those water rights have mitigated the circumstances, or does it have nothing to do with them in the future? Thanks.
Thank you. We will address that. Any other questions or comments from the public?
Obviously, from Veterans Home, you have an interesting, we have an interesting relationship. And I guess water rates, when some rates go up, of course, how we adjust those for the home to be happy, I'm sure it all works out. But I do have a question, basically, is the subsidizing, which I just heard from this presenter, that it's very, very unusual, and in fact hardly ever happens. I'm just curious as how that happened in the first place, and why wasn't adjusted on a yearly basis or something? Why was it allowed to increase to such a debt load?
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Is she, did I see that hand go up or no? No? Really? You're not? Out of all the topics all year long, you're not going to comment on this?
I'm answering his question.
Oh. You could do that in the form of a comment if you'd like. It just doesn't feel right for you not to comment on this issue.
I don't want to comment on water. As long as we can serve, that's my big thing.
I'm Billy Hewitt at Nine Landy Way. You asked how this got started. Well, I think maybe it started here, I'm not sure, in this room, when the council and the staff at that time wanted to do something for the people of the community. So I suggested, let's subsidize the water. Never to the tune of this amount. It was $100,000. That's, you know, that was the amount, as I recall. Of course, my memory's not absolutely sharp. And then it has proceeded to be a sort of a soft spot in the leaders' hearts, I believe, that they really felt like they were helping people of the community more satisfactorily than the community center has helped people. But then, you know, through this, through the study and everything, I do understand that we were also helping people who didn't even live in town, who didn't even use or used excessive water. So conserving water was not a part of that subsidy. But that's how it got started. I don't know whether to be proud or sad. Anyway, I do not object to the increases. I mean, I object to the increases because I'm on a fairly fixed income, as are a lot of people in this town. I am more fortunate that I have access to a little bit, but there are people who, this will hurt, I do think. And I already talked to Steve about helping them, and it seems that there is no way for an enterprise like this. It has to be a public utility in order to help those who are on fixed incomes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Feel much more satisfied that you gave some comments, Billy. Thank you. Any others before I close the public hearing portion of this item? Then I will go ahead and close the public hearing portion. What I would like to do is ask staff to respond to the questions. I'll work, let's see.
I've got them, if you want me to.
You've got them all. If you can work in order, and if I have any written down that you don't address, I will bring it up. Thank you, yes.
Let me start first with the conversation about senior rates help for those on fixed incomes. One of the ironies of Proposition 218, which was a voter initiative, and it addressed a little bit of Mr. Dove's comments, that in historical past, there were some public agencies that had a higher rate of return on their utility enterprise operations. And the proposition was put in, and it basically kind of limited it, and it said, "You're not able to recover more than what it actually costs you to deliver the service." One of the unintended consequences of that really was an end to lifeline senior rates because, basically, that means another customer class has to be charged more than it costs them in order for somebody else to get the discount. them in order for somebody else to get the discount. And that's really the premise. The other challenge is the town could create a general fund subsidy, but then we would have to administer some type of a program, establish criteria, and evaluate as to who, what constituted worthiness. And I've heard from some folks, you know, that's who, there's a lot of controversy about providing financial documentation and information as to whether this income status. So that'd be a very high-cost administrative burden, but in general, that's one of the reasons you've seen elimination of programs. There are some programs, like if you look on your PG&E bill, you will see you actually pay several dollars, and that goes into a PUC managed program for income criteria. But again, then there's another entity managing that and determining. Hopper Creek asked about meters. And in fact, in many cases, apartments have an opportunity, or condos, to choose whether to have a master meter, and then bill back or include that in their base rate, or in this case, as Hopper Creek is doing, they provide garbage, water, sewer, and they pay that through their homeowners association. Some condominium complexes have individual meters, and the individual user pays for it. And, you know, the net consequence is the same, because you've got to pay for the garbage, you've got to pay for the water. The town can provide and work with meters. In fact, the affordable housing going in at the Yountville Inn actually has individual meters for all of their units. The bigger question at Hopper Creek would be what the cost to go in and install the meters would be, and how practical that is related to their plumbing installation. And I honestly don't know that. That is certainly something that our staff would be more than happy to work with, Hopper Creek, and do some initial evaluation to see what it would be. The meter cost, as you just saw in the, actually, part of the fee structure, it would be about, if we did it, about $200, labor to install the meter, and the current meter cost is running plus or minus $130 a meter. So I wouldn't say it's cost prohibitive. But again, that would be something we'd have to work with, that particular condominium management and their board of directors, if it was feasible.
Just to clarify that comment, that would be an assessment of the membership of the property?
That would be their choice.
The homeowners would still be paying for that construction, or the meter change. The town would not be subsidizing the meter installation for the residents?
That's correct.
Well, and I also want to add, there's a few other costs. Not only would the property owner pay for the meter, the plumber to install the meter, but when you look at the rates for a 3/4-inch meter versus a 6-inch meter, each individual property owner would probably be paying more than they would by spreading the cost of the larger meter across the 42 people. So not only is it physically challenged to put in all the meters and pay for those, but as a fixed cost at the beginning, you also have a continuing, ongoing cost to each property owner, for each condo owner.
And that's where it depends on the structure, because again, it's based on a volume of, you know, spread. Now, the question was asked, what about fairness for people that aren't here all the time? And I'll do my best to explain this in how we set up our rate structure. Basically, the fixed cost, which is the 50% component, you know, that's the cost for us to have the pipes in the ground, staff personnel trained to meet state requirements to manage, run the system, negotiate, manage the water purchase, produce all the state required reports. That's our fixed cost before we even deliver one drop of water. And based on the council's policy direction, it was the determination to proceed with an equitable cost that we have to charge the same on a prorata basis per account, regardless of consumption. And then your other 50% is actually based on your actual usage. So, and that's what this change has done. And actually, I think it's the fairest all the way around, because in this particular case, you're going to pay from drop one. In other words, you know, there's no base gallon included in your base fee. Each customer is going to pay on that four-tiered system based on their usage. A low-use person will pay less for that 50% component than a higher use. But it's very equitable in the sense that everybody is paying the same to have the availability to have the water. And then Carla Rife asked about what impact did our sale of the water rights? Very good question. Had we not sold the water rights, you'd be looking at an even higher deficit, because the town was paying $220,000 to $250,000 a year to maintain our water rights, not buy water, to maintain our water rights. And the North Bay Aqueduct is evaluating what are considered assessments, which will be additional fees charged for the member agencies participating, and they're looking at somewhere to 10% to 15%. So had we not sold the water rights and banked the money to establish the drought reserve fund, you'd be looking at the water fund itself having a $450,000 structural deficit, or conversely, needing to recover another $250,000.
So, and Steve, if you could just, you just kind of glossed over it real quickly, where that money went. The $250,000 that we were paying basically in water insurance, no water, but actually just the insurance of getting a percentage of water, that money went primarily to a drought reserve fund that didn't use to exist, correct? And then could you explain where the money went?
When the town sold, let me start. First thing is, we were paying, much like our fixed fee, that $250,000 was our fixed cost to buy in to the North Bay Aqueduct system. So that's what we had to pay for the whole management of the system, which starts way up in all the watersheds and the dams and the various areas and maintenance. So we were paying that, and that goes into the state system. When we sold our water rights, we stopped doing that. By council policy, the savings from the sale went to establish the drought reserve fund, which has 200 million. You also allocated some water.
Too many.
Two, I'm sorry. Two million. And that is so that you have a reserve, should we face a drought situation, that we can buy water on the spot market when it'll be much more expensive. And I think that's a very prudent conservative. But again, if you just looked at it, you know, if you're looking at a $400,000 to $500,000 operating deficit in $2010, not adjusted for inflation or other factors, that wouldn't have gone very far. So I think that's an excellent point that's raised. And really, had we not done that, I think we would have been looking at a much more significant rate adjustment.
And the last question that was already answered by our member of the public, is there any disputing issue, is recollection of the origin of the subsidy? No? So we're going to trust her, we're going to trust her memory more than she does. Okay, with that, I think it's time now to make a determination, a formal determination of the protest, the status of the protest? Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The record should further reflect that the protest letters that have been received by the town should be entered into the record, and that, as stated earlier, there were nine protest letters, eight of which were valid for the water protest for the rates, and seven which were valid for the wastewater rate protest. So with that, there is not sufficient number of protests to stop the process, and therefore it comes back to the council level for deliberation decision. Thank you very much for that information. So I will ask the council for discussion and eventual action. So I will start. Councilmember Muller, you were one of the members of our ad hoc committee on this issue, so if you could maybe begin with your comments, and then we'll take a roll call vote once everyone's had a chance to speak.
Well, I'd like to start by thanking our representatives from Bartle and Wells with helping us with this process. We had numerous meetings over six months, and it was a very collaborative effort, really, going through what the best proposal to bring to the council should be. And the overriding consideration, which were shown in the very first slide, what our goals and objectives were, was that this was a fair and equitable process. And through that, I think, as we've discussed, we found that some of our apartment and mobile home users were at a rate that did not seem fair and equitable, and theirs are, for that first year, significantly going down. So we were able to correct that problem, as well as really discuss what it was really costing the town, and trying to come up with proposals that would be covering our costs and also bringing us out of this deficit, not in the first year, but slowly over these five years. And as we've discussed here tonight, we're not going to have a big pile of money sitting here. This is just going to be enough just to cover our costs. So through this process, I think we've really kind of worked through what, again, was going to be the most fair and equitable water rates that, you know, we all live here in the town, we're all going to be experiencing these with all of our other citizens. So it's affecting each and every one of us, and I think this is the most prudent thing to do, whether it's a good idea or not a good idea to subsidize. We can no longer financially afford it. And I think we would all agree as council members that it is our number-one job to balance the budget. And this is what we're doing here tonight with these proposals. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Yes, Madam Barr, thank you. I want to first of all thank Bartle Wells, and also thank the public. It's not a painless process that everyone's going through. Sitting up here on the dais, we all recognize we're going to have, we're going to be sharing in that, this exercise, and the pain that may come from the rate increase. What I would go back and echo, though, is that had we not given out $3 million in subsidies in the last 10 years, what could we be doing with those funds today? Could we have made investments in the infrastructure and otherwise that would preclude us from such a dramatic rate increase? I don't know. But certainly, we've benefited in the last 10 years from those funds. And I was trying to do the math in my head, you know, I maybe should have put some money in savings or into T-bonds, maybe I could have recovered my rate increase. I don't know. In general, I'm against subsidies. I think they mask the true cost of running the enterprise. I think this has been a great exercise the town has gone through. We've had some really good feedback, some nice analytical support. And I think that the community in general, as exhibited by the number of specific written protests, recognizes that this is something that needs to occur, as painful as it's going to be. I do recognize that people on a fixed income, this is going to be more difficult for them to absorb, and I wish we could resolve that in some manner. And maybe in the future, as we get on the path, something will result itself, or maybe we'll have shorter increases from the Vetsome than we're expecting. That being said, we are fairly, I believe, fairly sharing the cost, specifically as we adjust the rates to be 50% fixed versus 50 variable from the 2872%. And I think it's also critically important that as we, as residents, benefit from the services that are provided in this town, we recognize that we have an incredible infrastructure that we all live upon. And making sure, or ensuring that we continue to invest in that infrastructure, and that's what this plan does, is a really important part of being able to be comfortable in Yountville. I guess the only other question or thing I would put out there is, what would we give up in Yountville to not raise water rates? Because that's really what it would boil down to in the end, and I think this is the right approach. That being said, I feel very comfortable that a good process has been gone through, and that, you know, there's been ample opportunity for people to communicate any concerns or protests. And so I feel that it's been very well done, and look forward to moving forward with this action.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall. Councilmember Dornbecker, please.
Yes, I'd like to thank you for the water study and the wastewater study. It's, you know, a reality I do believe in, that we do have to have our feet on the ground and make hard decisions. I've been on the town council for two months, so I was not involved in some of the early discussions about this program. But I personally do strongly feel that in a town of our size, I don't think the expense of addressing the needs of our seniors or our most vulnerable people on fixed income over the next five years is a cost that we can't, that cannot be borne. And I'd like us, I'd like the staff to look into doing something to address the most vulnerable or the most needy of our citizens, to help them. I also think that conservation education should be a part of this program, in which we didn't talk about it tonight, but when we water our gardens, that's the largest part of the water that we use. And so I think that it's important that we make sure that we talk to our citizens about using water efficiently and effectively. And thirdly, I think if we're talking about investing in our infrastructure, we should also consider looking to the future and the future infrastructure that we're going to need to recapture rainwater so that it doesn't just go down the drain and into the river, and to also someday address the gray water situation. There are lots of things that we're going to have to do, because water is a very important issue, and this is based in reality, we have to do this. But I think we also need to be intelligent about the choices that we make.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Chilton.
I was thinking this in many of the same terms that Ms. Hewitt said, "I object, but I don't protest." I remember, I was thinking about our two new council members, because four years ago, just a little over four years ago, my very first meeting, January 2nd, 2007, on the council, we had a water rate vote, which was the last time that rates were raised. And it's not a fun thing to do, and like Councilwoman Muller said, it affects everybody, it affects everybody at the dais, it affects everybody in town, and it's not something that anybody desires. I thought there was an interesting thing, a couple of things that ought to be noted again. And I was doing the math here on my piece of paper, is that even in 2015, and the point was made in the presentation, is that our combined water and sewer rate on average will be less than what they pay in St. Helena and Calistoga today. And as town manager pointed out, that doesn't include St. Helena's at least 55% rate increase that they're talking about. I'm not sure where Calistoga will end up. But I think it's, there's a couple of good factors, but it's always best to be cheapest. And I hope that we can, hopefully, we can stay in that situation. We've talked a lot about the fact this does impact a lot of people, and I think that is really the number-one concern that we all have. And a couple of things have transpired, I just want to point it out, and you talked about the collaborative nature and the options, is the rate increase, I got a, I think the whole council got a letter from Mr. Cowley, who lives at Hopper Creek Condos, about the rate increases, and he gave the average rate increase for the residents there. When I did the math on that, I kind of went back, because I wanted to make sure if I responded, that I thought that the numbers he was giving was right, which I confirm with Kathleen was. The rate increases overall, I shouldn't say rate, but the total cost is less for, I think, the most, if we call it most vulnerable populations, which typically are in multi-unit housing, it's mobile homes, the condos, the various condos, because we have made changes to the system that, as we've talked about, I think are more fair to those type of users that were being penalized because they were being thrown into high tiers of usage just by the fact they were multifamily. So I think that that one piece really should be highlighted, is it doesn't feel, it never feels good to say it could be worse, but it certainly could be worse. And the second is, is that we are in, the structure we have, we're making a loan to ourselves, and this fortunately is not a social security-type trust fund loan, it is one that we're able to pay back. We're loaning ourselves money now so we don't have to increase rates as much in kind of a shock manner, like they've talked about in St. Helena, that really has shocked a lot of people. So I know that the council, the subcommittee, working with the public, working with our consultant staff, have really looked at a lot of those issues. And I'm not saying that those aren't continuing to be something that we should look at, but we shouldn't forget those are built in. And the other thing I was thinking as I read through this is, we often hear about state agencies and regional water boards and the California Air Resources Board, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And they pass Rule X and Rule Y and Rule Z. And Rule X and Rule Y and Rule Z may be great, we recycle tons of water, but it costs Rule Y, and Rule Z may be great, we recycle tons of water, but it costs money, and it costs a lot of money. And I think that we understand that a lot of things are good, but when you read about those things in the newspaper, eventually, they're going to trickle down to all of us who are the taxpayers. So you should always keep that in mind. I hope that, I hope that what we're doing is going to really solidify, and I believe it will, our enterprise utilities, and we can give some stability, and really that ability to know what's coming for all of our residents in the future. So I reluctantly, but feel it's a responsible thing, is to support this new rate structure.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I think many of my points have been very eloquently stated already by council, and really appreciate Mr. Dove's and the saying's, a very thorough report on this issue can be very complicated, hard to follow. One point I just wanted to follow up on, part of this was addressed about the North Bay Aqueduct Kern water rights. We were getting no water support from that. That was basically an insurance policy, to be able to buy water, and not even the percentage that we were paying for. And the fact that we had the foresight to sell those rights allowed us to fund not the general fund, not the community center that some people have alleged, not random expenses, but a drop reserve fund, that again, we are proactively preparing this town for a worst-case scenario. We hope we never need that fund. But we have been able to really position ourselves, I think, in a very positive way with some of the previous council's actions, and this council's ongoing action. I think what's ironic also is, I've been on the council for over six years now, and so I've been a part of quite a bit of this process. One of the focuses we were trying to follow up on was conservation. And with the tiering and those structures that were in place, we were trying to encourage conservation, and it really almost had a reverse effect, because as has been stated, with the rate structure that was in place, not only was a portion of people's water use included in their rate, their base rate, but people that aren't living here full-time were basically getting a break from residents, because we were having to cover the core operating costs of the entire system. I think we've improved on that situation with this proposed 50/50 split. I think it's more equitable and more appropriate, and with our structure, we will get back to that focus of encouraging conservation. If people want lower bills, use less water, and I think that's what this structure's going to do. A reminder also that we're not trying to do this to make more money, we are trying to finally cover the costs of these enterprise operations. And, you know, we've talked already about the amount of money that the town has put forth, and with best interests at heart, to give our residents a benefit. And it's been something we've talked about for years, this is something that is truly a local residential benefit, it's just no longer sustainable. And I think that we finally have to come to grips with that reality. So as has been mentioned, we are still going to maintain either the very lowest or close to the lowest rates in the valley and in the immediate area. We're going to continue to try to keep those expenses as low as absolutely possible, but we also, I pride myself, and I know the council prides itself, on being able to provide a very high level of service to our community, both in the water, the wastewater, and all of our services. So I think this is necessary, as painful as it is, and it's never a good time. People say, you know, "Why are you doing this now, when households are still recovering from the economic condition?" But as has been pointed out, things would only get worse, and it's never really going to be a good time to do this, but I think it's important that we move forward now, instead of putting it off. With that, I will ask for a roll call vote of the council, if there actually is, I suppose we should have a motion, if there is a motion to adopt this resolution.
Okay. Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2947-11, establishing a revised schedule of water and wastewater rate and charges and miscellaneous water-related utility service fees. Do I need to continue that? Is that correct? Is that proper?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion to second. If I could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and thank you again for the very thorough analysis. Thanks to the public, who did participate throughout this long process, and just know that we will continue to be diligent about providing a high level of service to everyone. So thank you all very much on that item. We are going to... Yeah, I think what we'll do right now is we'll take a five-minute break, we'll reconvene here, it's at 7:40. So Item 10, administrative and regular items. 10A, wine tasting room discussion. Staff report, please. Or actually, before we go to a staff report, I have a feeling there's going to be a statement.
Yeah, I need to...
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Dunbar. I've consulted with the town attorney, and he has advised me that while the discussion on wine tasting room regulations within the town of Yountville will have no direct impact upon the operations of my employer, Cliff Lady Vineyard, to the extent that there may be indirect impacts upon my employer, these economic impacts are not significant enough under the regulations of the FPPC to result in my disqualification. At this time, I will elect to participate, but I am required to disclose that I'm an employee of Cliff Lady Vineyard, serving as its vice president of finance.
Thank you. Do we have any other potential conflicts? No? Seeing none? Now, please, staff report.
Good evening. This is a follow-up to the wine tasting and wine service use discussion that was most recently before you in December. And at that meeting, you directed staff to further refine the proposed draft definitions, and to take those to the public at a workshop, and we held that workshop in January. We also took it before the ZDRB last week, and so we have their comments to present to you tonight. The final set of draft definitions that we're offering take in all that input from the town council, from the public meeting, and also from the ZDRB. And I'll go into some of the more specific ZDRB comments as we come to those slides.
So if I could just ask you a clarifying question now. At the end of all this, we may end up with clearly defined definitions that the council would like to move forward with, we may still need to adjust these definitions. I want to make sure the council knows exactly what you expect of us.
We're looking for a final set of comment, that we can incorporate either into revising the definitions, or doing what we have presented tonight. It will come before you as an ordinance, and we hope to do that by the first meeting in April. So this is sort of a final go-around to see how close did we get, but there is opportunity for some more modification.
Great, thank you.
So this is the list of the proposed definitions, and they've grown a little bit. They are wine tasting room, wine shop, wine tasting bar, bar, nightclub, full-service and limited-service restaurant, mobile food vendor, and special event. The first definition is wine tasting room, and staff is proposing a definition, that this be a business that is open to the public and primarily used for the retail, marketing, education, and sampling of a winery's products, and that can be a single winery or multiple wineries. And the definition includes that wine tasting does not include quantities greater than a tasting-size pour. And this sort of encapsulates the main concept of wine tasting, that it is the education and sampling of wine used through the vehicle of tastings that works to sell that wine, either bottles or cases. The second component of the definitions is that tastings may include food and wine pairings as an accessory use, where the food is ancillary to the wine tasting, where there's no onsite food preparation, and where approval is received from environmental management. The definition goes on to clarify that food pairings may not involve menu options or meal service, so that there is confusion that this is a restaurant or not. And this encapsulates the second concept of wine tasting, that any of the food and wine pairing that is conducted is really secondary to the main component of education and sampling to sell wine. At the suggestion of several council members, we've now linked this definition to an ABC license type, and in this case, a wine tasting room must possess a type O2 license from the Department of ABC. And an O2 license would apply to the winery's main facility, where they produce the wine, and also in duplicate form to an off-site tasting room. And so in town, we have the duplicate O2 format, since we don't have any wineries. Before I move on, I'd like to comment that we made this connection with the ABC license, but there was also a suggestion that perhaps we should look to environmental management and their definitions, and use those for our land use regulations. And when we looked at those, the environmental management enforces the California State Retail Food Code, and that code is more interested in food handling and food safety, and so it doesn't include the type of definitions that we want from a land use perspective. Examples of wine tasting rooms are Maison Ries, a multiple-source winery, and then the single-source wineries are really pretty much all the other wine tasting rooms in town. The definition for wine shop is proposed as a commercial business for the retail sales of wine from multiple wineries and distributors, and wine tasting may be included as an accessory use, but it may not operate as a bar. And this brings me to the first ZDRB comment, that perhaps this definition in wine tasting should be reduced to one definition, because from a land use perspective, they're pretty similar. It's the retail sale of wine, where wine tasting is used as a vehicle to sell that wine. And from a land use perspective, the impacts are similar when we're not talking about special events. The ABC license types that could apply to a wine shop are Type 20, which is a package store selling beer and wine, a Type 21, which is a package store with a general liquor license, so including distilled spirits, and a Type 42, which is defined as a bar but for beer and wine. The only example here in town of what would qualify under this definition would be Grosinger, although Grosinger was approved as wine tasting. The next definition is wine tasting bar, and this is proposed as a wine tasting room that allows onsite consumption of wine in quantities greater than a two-ounce pour. And the concept is, this really is a wine tasting room that's involved in retail sales of wine and the wine sampling, but they're doing it in a greater quantity. Doesn't really envision the operation of a bar, as that term is more commonly known and understood, and in this case, it's a Type O2 license that would apply. And we don't have any of these businesses in town. There was discussion at the ZDRB meeting that perhaps wine tasting bar could be incorporated into the bar definition, and that's possible. Here is a definition for bar. A business where alcoholic beverages are sold for onsite consumption, which is not part of a larger restaurant, and it includes a wide variety of different uses, including bars, wine bars and lounges, taverns, pubs, cocktail lounges, and the idea is that food service is ancillary to the beverage service. The ABC license types under which a bar can be conducted is a Type 42, a beer and wine license, a Type 48, a general liquor license, or a Type 61, which is a beer license. Pontius and the newly entitled The Wine Cellar is a wine bar would be examples of this type of license. At the suggestion of a council member at the December meeting, we've included a definition for nightclub, and it is proposed as a bar that includes regularly occurring live music and entertainment, which may include dancing. And the distinguishing feature of a nightclub is that the entertainment and music is regularly occurring. It's not occasional music that occurs at a wine tasting room or a bar, but this more intensive use activity. And this type, a nightclub must possess a Type 48 ABC license. So now we move from the wine service uses to more of the food service uses, and in keeping with council's suggestion that we split the two restaurant definitions into full-service restaurant and limited-service restaurant, we'll present these two definitions. A full-service restaurant is proposed as a business where food is regularly prepared onsite and served to customers for consumption on the premises, and it generally has the characteristics to find here, that the tables and seats of the facility for onsite consumption are sufficient for the volume of food sold, that customers order and receive food while they're seated at the tables, that food is typically paid for after consumption, and it's not typically packaged for transportation off-site. This type of establishment does not have takeout or walk-up windows. And it may possess several different ABC licenses, a Type 41, which is beer and wine license, a Type 47, which is a general liquor license, or a Type 75, which is a brew pub. And pretty much most of the restaurants in town that would be recognized as restaurants are on this list. This brings us to limited-service restaurant, which is intended to categorize a food service type that doesn't rise to the level of full-service restaurant. It would be defined as a business where food is regularly prepared onsite and available to customers for consumption, either on or off the premises. And its characteristics include that the customers predominantly order and receive food from a walk-up counter, where food is paid for at the time the food is ordered, where food is typically served in disposable containers or packaged for transportation off-site, and this type of business may possess a Type 41 license from the ABC, and that's the type of license that Napa Style holds. Examples of this type of restaurant are Napa Style and Yountville Deli. Mobile food vendor was a definition that was added after the public hearing in an attempt to really try to define all of the different food service type uses. And we're proposing a definition, that this is a truck equipped to prepare and cook or cater foods with direct sales to customers. This type of vendor must obtain the consent of the property owner to locate on private property, certification from environmental health, and approval from the town of Yountville, and these currently are not permitted within the town's right-of-way on streets, they must be parked on private property. And Tacos Garcia, of course, is the example. We have, we are proposing a definition for special events, because special events are so commonly associated with our wine tasting room uses, but they haven't been defined, and they've been, the result is that they're defined during the entitlement process and the operational characteristics of the business. So we're proposing a definition, that this is an activity that's not specifically listed in a definition of a use, and it's an accessory use that's secondary to the primary use. When considered in terms of a wine tasting room, the types of events that would fall under the special event definition would be a use that is not the primary, is not the marketing, sampling, or education of the winery's products, where it's consumption of wine in a quantity greater than a two-ounce pour, where there is service in outdoor use areas, I'm sorry, outdoor open space areas, or where food is prepared onsite. And for Somersden, the example is the Thursday Night Live series, those are activities that are outside of what their normal wine tasting use is, but those are limited as to number and size, and this last item here shows how they can be conditioned as part of the use permit approval process. I'll just comment briefly on retail diversity and how it may apply to these new definitions. It currently applies to all new wine tasting rooms in towns, and that's specifically called out in the policy. It has the potential of applying to all new retail uses, where the council determines that the use has become overrepresented in the commercial zoning district, that there isn't a second use category that the council's made that determination. Exempted from this policy would be our restaurants and ends explicitly, but also bars and nightclubs by implication, since these are not retail uses. So that gives you an idea of what types of uses we'll apply the retail diversity policy in the future. Quickly go over some of the different parking options that'll apply to these new uses. We have an existing retail standard in the town's municipal code. It applies the ratio of one space for each 250 square feet of floor area, and this will continue to apply to the town's wine tasting rooms, and it would also apply to the new wine shop definition, if that's incorporated into the code, because those are retail uses. The town has another existing standard for restaurant, cafe, and bar, and that's one space for each four seats. And this would continue to apply to the restaurants as we know them, but also to a limited-service And this would continue to apply to the restaurants as we know them, but also to a limited service restaurant. And using Yountville, I'm sorry, Napa Style as an example, where it's retail and a limited service restaurant, we would apply the restaurant standard to the seats, but the retail standard to the remainder of the space. We would suggest we eliminate the cafe standard, since that's not included within the definitions any longer, but that would be within the full-service or limited-service restaurant. So it is accounted for. And we're suggesting, or asking for the council's direction, on two different options for establishing parking standards for wine service uses. We could add wine tasting bar and nightclub to this existing standard. However, based on the fact that bars don't have the same fixed seats that are typical of a restaurant, and that they often also include standing room, it may be more accurate to apply a building code standard to establish both maximum occupancy and then to a ratio for the parking. And we're looking for your input on those two options. We don't have a parking standard for mobile food vendor, and we're considering, or we're proposing a standard of five spaces per vendor, based on the fact that they have high demand times. And this may make locating a new vendor in town infeasible, because there would need to be overflow spaces in a parking lot, and that comment was noted by the ZDRB, and it's acknowledged by staff. So with these new definitions, we have an opportunity to call out permitted uses that require a use permit, and those which would be restricted from the different zoning districts. And we have the three commercial districts listed here. But before I move on, it's important to note that all commercial uses currently do require a use permit, so no uses are simply allowed. The residential scaled commercial zoning district is the most restrictive district. It's located on the east side of Washington and backs up to residential uses. So staff would propose that we restrict wine tasting bar, bar, and nightclub, and clarify that restaurant means a full-service restaurant. And we are suggesting that the permitted uses include wine tasting room, wine shop, and limited service restaurant. The wine tasting room, though, is up for discussion. There are some members of the council that have voiced their concern that this should fall, they should fall within the restrictive category. So I'd like some final clarification on that item. The Old Town Commercial District is located on North Washington, and it's split with a west side and an east side. And staff is proposing that we establish a similar standard to the RSC, where we would allow more permissive uses on the west side and more restrictive uses on the east side, where it backs up to residential. And with this in mind, we would suggest perhaps all uses are permissible on the west side with a use permit, but the east side, we may wish to restrict wine tasting bar, bar, and nightclub. And I note that large restaurants of greater than 75 seats are already restricted on that side of the street. And so this really brings in a similar treatment of uses to the RSC zone. The primary commercial is the most permissive zoning district, and it's remote from the residential districts due to its location, so it may be appropriate for each of the uses, realizing, of course, that it would be through a use permit process and the discretionary review procedure. The last item I want to bring before you for consideration is whether we want to strictly condition the town's wine tasting rooms, and this would only apply to the wine tasting rooms, for a local sourcing of grapes. There's been discussion that perhaps the Yountville appellation is too specific, but there is some merit in requiring these tasting rooms to provide grapes from the Napa Valley region. I've provided some language from the St. Helena code and their definition of wine tasting room, and they require that 75% of the grapes do come from the Napa Valley. So the issues that we're seeking clarification on are in relation to some of those definitions, whether we should consolidate them or not, the parking standard that we should apply to bars and nightclubs, and whether we should include a local sourcing of grapes. And as I mentioned earlier, we're seeking one last round of comments, so that we can bring this back before you as a proposed ordinance in April.
Thank you very much. Specific questions of clarification before we get into analyzing these definitions? Do anybody have actual, yeah, councilmember Moller, questions?
I have a couple actual questions. I noticed you mentioned a couple time about restaurants, considering, you know, small restaurants are 75 seats or less, and it kind of brought me to the question of, well, do, what restaurants in town are more than 75 seats? I just came up with Bottega. I don't know. So that's my question.
I believe Cantona de Piero has in the range of 90. Our newly permitted R&amp;D Kitchen is in the range of, is it 120? I'd have to look these up specifically, but we do have restaurants that exceed that.
So Bottega, R&amp;D, and Pietro are?
At least, yes.
Or 75, okay.
There's others, Partisano.
Okay, so those are all larger. And then I have a question about criteria that the staff follows for special events. How does, how do you guys figure that out?
We've been going on a case-by-case basis, and an operator presents the type of special event they want to hold. And so we look at the zoning district, the proximity to residential, the number of times they want to hold it a year, and try to really rein them in for a reasonable amount. They always want to do more. They want to do them every weekend, every night. So it's been a learning experience of dealing on a case-by-case basis, based on where they're located. And that's why if you'll look at the wine tasting room spreadsheet, there's a wide variety of what's been permitted. There are smaller events for some wine tasting rooms, larger events allowed for others. Frequency tends to be pretty similar, about 20 per year or 24 per year.
Okay. But there's, so the only strict criteria you have is whether it's a special event, whether it's a minor or major, and that's the number of people. So that's the only strict criteria you have for?
Let's say we don't really have any strict criteria. We apply, we look at the use and determine if we should limit size, frequency, location, sometimes hours, so any number of things.
Okay.
If I could, also, I want to clarify, this is just kind of defining what a special event is. Your process for special events would not change. We still do a case-by-case individual application, and actually, we started tracking and evaluating those. So we look at things like parking, size, hours, if there's amplified music or not. And with council's direction, we've also started charging a processing and monitoring fee. So I think what this particular proposal here really is, is just providing a little bit of definition, because at council's observation, we're really attempting to define. And again, as each use comes to you, you have the ability in that conditional use application to put in the criteria for what will be allowed or not allowed in that special event evaluation.
And that comment is the type of comment we're seeking in going forward with developing maybe more specific criteria for distinguishing between those two. Also, I wanted to mention that in the definitions, as you look at them, the definitions are descriptive, but they are also, in many ways, regulatory. And if you see something that is too specific and you want to keep broader, for instance, in the mobile vendors, we, in the definition, prohibited them from private, or public property. And if you want to, in the future, open that up, that possibility, maybe we need to take that out or adjust it.
Any questions, clarification?
Yes, if you could go back, please, to the slide on Old Town Commercial. I just wanted to look, just very quickly, I didn't write them down fast enough, because I think you're making a distinction. I don't want to get hung up on ordinance or zoning. I just want to see again what your recommendation was with regards to the Old Town Commercial zoning, please. Because there was a recommendation, or at least something that was presented, I just want to make sure I understand it real quick. There. So everything on the west side is sort of free rein, as it is in the primary commercial. On the east side, reiterating this, wine tasting bar, bar, and nightclub. Okay.
I do want to clarify that in this particular case, if Ponte's, Ponte's would be grandfathered as a bar.
Right.
But if it was to come to town brand-new, not having been there because it abuts the residential area, the town would say no under what the proposed definition. So that is a observation. But Ponte's, as it continues, would be grandfathered, as would all current uses.
Right.
And you could think of that zone as kind of a hybrid between the primary commercial, which is against the highway, not adjacent to residences, and residential scale is, and similar restrictions. And in the Old Town, it has elements of both.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Can that raise one, can I ask one more question based on that?
Okay. And then I'll move back.
I'm done. I'm finished, but thank you.
Thank you.
That was my question.
So Ponte's would be grandfathered in. If Ponte's were to close and another bar opened, would that still be allowed if we accepted this as a matter of right?
That's a grandfathered use, and it would be treated similarly to how the town has treated others. Now, what I would say, the caveat there is, if that grandfathered use ceased to operate for a period of two years. Then that right would go away.
Okay. But it would still be a matter of right for anything. Okay, that helps, thanks.
Councilmember Doran Becker.
Yes, please. I found this very helpful, having these definitions spelled out. But I, when I was reviewing them this afternoon, and I can't remember where I saw it, you talked about possibly combining, and I'm trying to think, was it the wine tasting bar and wine shop or wine tasting room as a?
There are a couple options. Since wine tasting rooms and wine shops are both retail uses, those could possibly be combined into a single definition. The others are the three bar definitions, the wine tasting bar, bar, and nightclub, or they could also stand alone.
I see, thank you.
Vice Mayor, any clarifying questions?
I do. Couple things. First of all, thank you for all the ABC license ties, although I'm going to ask a question about that. Do you envision that, the way this works, and Bobby, we were talking about the regulatory nature, that we would be, a proposed ordinance would be enshrining that a type O2 license, a type 42 license, et cetera, or would those be more of guidelines for how the use permit process would unfold? And I'm thinking about the situation with a type O2 license, where over time, it used to only be pours, and they changed it to by the bottle. And if, is your idea that we would still enshrine those restrictions within the use permit process?
Yes, and under the definitions. And that's exactly why we've separated out wine tasting room, since ABC regulations would allow a holderman O2 license to pour by the glass or the bottle, but under our definition, it makes clear that that's not within the permitted land use rights of the town.
And that goes, I guess, to another question I had that Councilwoman Doran Becker just addressed. The wine tasting bar versus the bar designation, it seems like wine tasting bar is simply established for that type O2 license. You're stepping up from wine tasting pour to full glass, but you're not doing, you know, the whole menu possibilities of different types of wines, although one wine tasting room could have multiple wineries.
Exactly. That's why we've split that into two definitions.
I think that, no, okay, I won't make the comment on that.
I'll point out that we've tried to be very simple in this, and in some ways, I think it works better, because, you know, we don't have a nightclub, but people in their mind have a definition of what a nightclub is.
Sure.
And, you know, it could be called splitting hairs to say a bar is a bar, a bar, but a wine bar in this community means something different than a bar. So I think we've created, we're very comfortable with the portfolio of definitions, and, you know, the other thing is, let's try them out for a little bit and see where it goes.
Just a very quick comment. Thank you for checking in the environmental management codes. I didn't think you would find anything there, but you never know. The restaurant, if we can go to the definition of restaurant, and this again goes to your statement about being regulatory, these are not strict descriptions of what a full-service and limited-service restaurant is. You have in Part C, food is typically paid for after the consumption of the meal. I think the key word there is typically. We wouldn't have somebody coming in and suddenly having a novel idea of, oh, we'll pay ahead of time in that way. I'm not a full-service restaurant, right? Is that your, again, the intent?
We actually, at one point did not.
Is to have the spirit?
Yeah, we did not have that word in there, and then we thought, well, some restaurants that are, like Pearly's are full-service restaurants, someone could conceivably come in and get something to go that they would pay when they ordered it and had a drink at the bar and then left with it. So it's a technicality that they paid first, and we wanted to be consistent that the full service, in most cases, you pay at the end of the meal, but it could occur otherwise.
Well, and that's why I look at item E, the establishment does not have takeout or walk-up windows or counters.
And that's true.
And I can think, though, of, we're obviously not going to have one anytime soon, but like Chili's restaurants, all put in the separate door on the side with the separate order that was kind of a takeout counter. So I would, I'm only saying that if that one is very specific, that you might want to think about the language on that. Again, I'm thinking of somebody trying to be very creative.
Typically.
So we don't have Chili's.
I kind of like Chili's, though.
The idea was to call out the characteristics that most people think of as a restaurant and, or more like a limited service.
Parking on the restaurant, applying the restaurant, the seats ratio to all types of restaurants, I can conceive the idea of Domino's Pizza has no seats, they could have 1,000 square foot, and therefore, if it's a seat ratio, have no parking requirement at all. So I wonder if you thought about a hybrid, it's one parking space for 40 seats, or 250, one per 250 square foot.
We have considered a hybrid for the limited-service restaurant, because it does have that unique quality, whether there are seats or not.
Okay, I guess that can be a discussion item.
And then all of these, of course, are subject to use permit and conditions to be applied.
Those are my only questions.
Thank you. My only question at this point is going to continue the takeout from a full service, because my recollection is Pac Blues, specifically in their renovation, created an outdoor, if only coffee, but I think also food items to go, the concept being they had a separate counter on the side of the back patio, so people wouldn't have to go through the main service area. And I'm just thinking of somewhere like Cantona de Piero, or any other number of places that do pizzas to go. They encourage takeout orders, so to be, what's your interpretation of how that applies or doesn't apply with this language?
Our idea was that it is a strict takeout window or counter devoted just to that use, rather than going in and ordering takeout. We could make it a less strict and definitive standard and use as Vice Mayor Shilton just mentioned, maybe it's not the typical case that there's a window, but it's permitted.
I think it might be something we just have to have some discussion about in language, so I just want to bring that point up for right now. With that, I'll invite the public to comment or ask questions that we could then discuss. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the issue. Seeing no one moving, I'll bring it back for additional discussion by the council. Actually, I'll shift gears a little bit and go to my right and ask Councilmember Doran Becker if you could comment, please.
Well, I think that the planning department has done a good service in putting the effort into getting these descriptions nailed down. I'm really delighted with your work, having served on the zoning design review board and wrestled with these for so long. I really think that, you know, most of, I'm very comfortable with everything that I have read, and so I really don't have any questions. I just, I urge you to, you know, let me know when a nightclub applies for a license in town. I think that you've done a great job, and I think that, you know, this is something that we did need to do, so thank you.
I'm going to ask if you could comment specifically on what I understand, at least a couple of the things that staff's looking for. Are you comfortable merging? Are you comfortable merging or keeping separate the definitions for wine tasting room with wine shop? Are you, do you support merging those definitions?
No, I'm not. I think I would keep those separate personally. I think that they're, I'm more comfortable with them being defined that way.
Also, merging wine tasting bar with bar and/or with nightclub, do you want, you prefer separate definitions for those as well?
I would rather have a wine tasting nightclub. No. I think that they should remain separate. And then in the use permit, you know, you can adjust things. I think that I like these definitions the way they are.
I believe you're also, they're also looking for direction on the parking standards. One being mobile vendors, should there be a space requirement for mobile vendors, and they're proposing five spaces? Or as, as the Vice Mayor was just mentioning, there's a potential hybrid, either space and/or.
I think it could be either one, square footage, or, or the other way. I mean, five spaces per mobile unit, because you expect them to be turning over rapidly, so I would be comfortable with either one of those, really.
And staff, correct me if I don't define this one. You were asking comment on bar versus building code standards in terms of the parking?
Correct. Including it within the restaurant standard of one to four for each of the seats, or using the maximum occupancy and creating a ratio based on that, since it's allowed a higher occupancy because it is more, more standing room and less fixed seats.
Yeah, I think that that, that's the, the way to go on that, is to use the ratio based on the square footage or the, you know, occupancy.
Now, Mr. Mayor, you have one, you've done an excellent job on nailing all those that we're asking for.
Oh, the Napa Valley source, yeah. The, do you support, or would you prefer something other, what's generally proposed is 75% sourced fruit from Napa Valley?
No, no, I do. I certainly do. I think that the whole Napa Valley, we should work together to, you know, encourage buy local and promote local.
Is 75% a reasonable number, or would you recommend a different number, higher or lower?
I think that's, that's good.
Okay.
Are you going to, you know, run the same questions by everyone?
I am.
Okay.
As long as I remember them all. Now, I'll jump over, Counselor Hall, could I get your comments, and then feel free to try to get all those.
I wrote them down, so hopefully I'll do my best to answer them and give staff guidance. So first of all, let me just say that these definitions are extremely helpful. We have, this is a complicated process. Every time someone comes in and they want to have a new use or a use, and we're somewhat arbitrarily, and it's not very arbitrarily, but it's somewhat arbitrary, making a decision. And I don't necessarily know, although I'm sure the town attorney would recognize, there's probably some liability every time we decide something is slightly different than the next person's, and that we're going to accept theirs, but not the one before. I imagine there's some challenge to that, or could be a challenge to that. That said, presenting or putting forth these definitions will help us in making these determinations of the use permits without stepping on toes or stepping over lines. Again, they will be a guideline and a guidepost, so I applaud you and the staff on all of the definitions. I guess where I'm hung up a bit, and I want to make sure council is, is in line with that, is how these uses and the, how these uses will be located within our different zoning areas. And I, I know we, you know, I brought up the Old Town commercial, because it gets very specific with regards to what we're going to restrict. And I, I know we can grandfather in existing uses as they are today, and that there's certain rules around if a use terminates, how long it can be terminated without restarting again as the same grandfathered use. But I also just want to recognize that as certain areas of town, specifically the residential scale commercial, you know, I don't know today if that would be an appropriate area for a wine tasting bar. And I, and there's a lot of notes in here on that, and I don't recall staff's recommendation, but I don't know if that is a one, a space or a zone that we would necessarily want to have that kind of use. So I just put out there, I think the zones should also be in line with what our expected uses of these types of facilities, because the definitions are fantastic, but we've got to make sure that they're also interpreted properly within the zoning ordinance. And I think you've taken a stab at that, and I don't have any further comment to it other than I think it's, it's a good approach, and I just want to make sure it's consistent. So with that, I'll go to the questions, and I'll see if I can do my best, Mayor Dunbar, to answer them. I think the first one was whether or not to merge the wine tasting room with shop or keep it separate. I think it should be a separate definition. I think they're really separate uses. I think that the next question, my scribble is not that great, but is merging the wine tasting bar with nightclub, I think a?
And regular bar.
And/or regular bar. I think they are clearly separate uses. I'll follow Marita to the nightclub when we finally get the opportunity. But I do think that there is a clear defin, a clear difference between a bar where one is going to consume hard spirits or alcohol versus just beer and wine. And we see that, that's also listed in the ABC as a separate license, so I don't think the merging of those is prudent. On the parking standard, which I think is your next question, you know, I'm, I believe that, I'll start with the square footage component, or the space, the number of spaces per seats in a restaurant, I think are, you know, that, we need to be consistent, obviously, but with regards to a nightclub or a bar, because there is less seating, you should use some sort of ratio, I skipped one, I did, you should use a ratio with regards to max, max occupancy. But I don't, I don't necessarily think that the parking standard, and I'll, and I'll talk to mobile vendors, because it was one that was brought up. I think five spaces, I honestly don't have an opinion as to whether that's sufficient enough, because I, I don't know that I've ever seen five cars parked out there with regards to that. That's probably more than adequate, so I would assume that that is appropriate. Have I missed one of these parking standards?
The bar versus building code.
I did that. I said the occupancy, the ratio of the square footage or occupancy, I think is appropriate. And the last one would be the appellation. I'm not going to get on a soapbox here. I think Marita did a nice job of, or Councilmember Doran Becker did a nice job of presenting that. We do want to be friendly to our neighbors in this community. I would hate to see all the wineries in Anderson Valley or in Sonoma County that recognize Yountville is a fantastic place to locate one of these types of businesses, so they're going to come sell their wines here. And all they have to do is be the highest bidder for the space. That might do very well for us from an income standpoint, but the reality is, we wouldn't necessarily be supporting our neighbors, and I think they do a good job of supporting us. So I would embrace 75% recognition of Napa Valley, appellation, or any of the sub-apps that are within it, including Stags of District, Oakville, Rutherford, et cetera.
The one question of clarification I'm going to ask you to provide, you brought up the issue of wine tasting bar in Old Town Commercial, but I think the question is, wine tasting room versus wine tasting bar in Old Town Commercial. I would just like to hear your, if you, I think you've mentioned a past wine tasting room was acceptable, or at least in residential scale commercial, but if you could just explain your position on those two.
Well, and I guess as it relates specifically to the difference between wine tasting room and wine tasting bar, the, the issue of pouring openly full glasses or bottles of wine in an area that's going to back up to a residential space, and maybe I wasn't articulate when I said it the first time, but that, to me, is not an appropriate use that backs up to individuals' backyards. I don't know if I said that improperly the first time. A wine tasting room, on the other hand, would be an appropriate use, because it's not a sit-down, blow the bottle out, break it in the back on your way out to the door to get into your car. So again, at least that's not the intent. Not that a wine tasting bar would be so either, but I think it's really more the quantitative consumption of a wine tasting bar. My, my recollection, or what I perceive that is, is much greater than, and so the nuisance factor, potential nuisance factor from such a, such a use may not be appropriate for that. That's my, that's my perception.
If I sense what you're saying, you was, your comment would apply both to RSC and Old Town Commercial, the way I'm sensing it.
That's correct. And I brought it up only in Old Town Commercial, because that's where it was identified, at least in the document.
And that was the, the clarification I was requesting. Wine tasting room you find acceptable, wine tasting bar you feel should be restricted in both of those zones?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Mueller?
Let's see, I'll start with the questions and then go through some additional comments. I, too, I think for questions A, B, and C, I think you've done a great job spelling out those definitions. I don't see any point in throwing them in the garbage. I say, let's, you know, put them in there, and someone wants to have them. You've already done the work, I think it's great. Well, I think having more clarity is usually what I found is more valuable than being confused, so let's keep them. Regarding the parking standards for bar and nightclub, I also agree with your occupancy standard. I'm going to be very curious to see how you kind of work that out, because, you know, maybe 75% of the occupancy at peak hours, you know, taking into account street parking because it'll be late at night, so it'd be interesting to see what you kind of do there. But I think something like that would, I would certainly entertain that, because I don't want somebody, you know, making everyone stand up just so they can't have any parking. They don't have to have any parking, that doesn't make any sense. Local sourcing of the grapes, I also think that that's really the whole intent. We're, I certainly, and I think a lot of my councilmembers share the feeling that we really want to preserve the ag preserve, so therefore, we're allowing tasting rooms within our urban space here in Yountville, so it should be Napa Valley grapes. So what, the only clarity, and I think I hear what everyone's saying, is 75%. So I'm okay if somebody has six varietals in a tasting room, but one of them happens to be, you know, some Sierra Foothills Zen that they just happen to have. So if 75% of their varietals are Napa Valley, that's what we're talking about. Okay, that's fine, because I don't want to make, you know, one of the wine tasting rooms get rid of their Zinfandel, because they couldn't find any good local Zinfandel around. So 75% of their varietals need to be Napa Valley, I'm fine with that, too. I think that's a great idea, and really in the spirit of what we're trying to do here in the Napa Valley. With the special events, I think we might, once we kind of see that definition, I think down the line, we might really want to have some more discussion. I know it's something staff has to kind of look at here and there, and I'm still a little confused if we give a use permit, whether you can change those uses in a special event, and whether we want to allow that. So I'd like to see a little more discussion about how you guys go about that and, you know, where we can help later on. Regarding parking, for the mobile food vendors, I don't really see them as a typical brick-and-mortar restaurant. I think that the people really, you know, like Tacos Garcia, if, and I don't really want to discourage that business use, so if there's a way that, you know, if somebody else really wants to come to town and it works, I'm pretty flexible to see what their proposal might be. You know, if somebody just wants to come in the summer times and maybe park at the edge of the park, and there's a bathroom, I'm, I'm open on a case-by-case to kind of see what that would really look like and deal with it that way. RSC, I definitely think that we need to restrict wine tasting rooms, just, we're at a saturation, we're overrepresented in that area, we've got plenty in there as a matter of right. So I would agree that wine tasting rooms really just don't belong in residential scale commercial in the same way with the east side of Old Town. And, and I, I still think that Old Town Commercial even needs a little more discussion. It's, every time I've read that zoning over and over, too, and mostly it just kind of talks about the buildings. It really doesn't talk about the uses, and I think that that's where a lot of new growth is coming. So I think down the line, you know, really, what's going to go in there and what's going to be permitted, might need a little more discussion, but right now, I think that, I wouldn't put wine tasting rooms or wine shops on the east side either. I think there's plenty of room on the, on the west side for, for both of those, and especially because of our saturation. So those are my comments, to make sure I've got everything. I think I'm pretty flexible with mobile food vending trucks, and I don't think they really need five parking places. We're never going to get one in town. We just, you know, there's a lot of places that just don't have the parking. So if somebody can come up with a flexible plan, I'm willing to talk to them. Okay, hit them all.
Okay, thank you. And I think for clarification, just recently, within the last few weeks, the council basically, in a 3-2 vote, explained the council's position on wine tasting rooms in the RSC area, and maybe just with a show of a nod, that still applies. I assume that councilmembers Hall, Doran Becker, and myself were in support of keeping them allowed in RSC, and Councilmember Mueller and Vice Mayor Chilton were opposed to it, or wanted to restrict them. Does that still apply? The Old Town Commercial zone was not covered in that previous vote. Does that change anybody's position, or is it still? You've already commented that you feel the same way in both zones.
As long as it's not advancing it to the level of a wine tasting bar. I mean, again, the, the condition use permit process gives us that, that opportunity, as long as there's definition around it.
So is that a fair assessment of people's position? Because those were two items that you had asked for comment, and we hadn't covered, so, okay, we're good. So Vice Mayor Chilton, your comments and answers to the questions.
Comments with a few questions in there, Sandra. Number one, merging the definition between wine tasting and a wine shop. I'm assuming that the wine shop designation as defined here is different from pure retail of wine that has no tasting associated with it. So if somebody was going to sell bottles of wine but not have any tasting, is that a wine shop, or is that not a wine shop?
You've just brought something up. I think it's only a 42 that would allow them to do the tasting, a package store, however. And this is something I don't actually know the answer for. But since those are off-sale licenses.
Twenty or 21, those are off-sale.
Twenty-one and 21, so I don't think that allows them to do tastings.
That would be similar to ranch market.
Right. So that, that's not covered in the wine shop designation, we're talking about on-premise.
I'm sorry, repeat that?
In the, the wine shop designation, well, we have type, no, we do have type 20.
Twenty and 42.
I would clarify that definition, because you just raised something new, that wine tasting would only be allowed at a wine shop when permitted under the ABC license. So that would mean that we could have a package store or a bottle shop under a 20 or a 21, but they can't conduct wine tastings. So that supports having more definitions.
Correct. So I was going to say, I would not get rid of those.
Okay.
Or not merge them.
No. The merging of the definition between a tasting bar and a, and a bar bar, shall we call it? I, obviously, I'm in, probably in the minority, I, I don't see much difference. The difference, to me, seems like you're serving only wine versus wine, beer, and spirits, or wine and beer. So I, I'm not passionate about that. If it was up to me, I think that's one definition is probably the closest that could be merged, but as you said, let's see how it rolls, and I don't have a problem with that. Parking standards, I made the comment about a hybrid definition when it comes to all kinds of restaurants, the 250, the retail space percentage, or one space for every four seat, whichever's higher, would be my position on that. I agree that the bars should be tagged on occupancy, but I would not say that should be a one-to-four ratio. I think that would be unreasonably high, so some, some ratio on that, and maybe you can go to that, you know, either or, whichever one is, is higher. What's other parking standards? Mobile vendors, they clearly need to have some, some amount of parking. Five, I, I don't see any reason that's not reasonable, but there certainly should be, should be required, as it is of everyone else. I- I have a little concern on the Napa Valley sourcing of grapes from two perspectives, one of which has to do with an enforcement issue. You know, I don't think we're going to walk around the tasting rooms and say, how many bottles do you have out that are from Carneros, but the Carneros is Sonoma County, or is it in Napa County? So I have that concern, and that goes to what's considered the measurability. When I come forth and say, I'm going to do a wine tasting room and I'm going to have 75%, does that mean that every tasting that I have, if there's four bottles, only one of them can be, you know, a Carnero, Sonoma County, and the other three have to be? Or, I just get concerned about that issue. So, that issue of enforcement and measurability, of making sure we define what it means when somebody makes a promise like that, how is that going to come out? As the mayor just said, I believe that the RSC zoning and the Old Town Commercial on the east side should not have wine tasting rooms, then by inference, wine shops, wine tasting bars, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, would not. I would agree with councilmember Hall as well, though RSC, he may not agree on wine tasting room, but seems to agree on the other items, that there's at least agreement on every other definition except for the wine tasting room specifically. Yes, Bob, you're confused?
I was just thinking that on the tracking, the licenses each O2, if it is an O2 tasting room, each, if they're handling multiple wineries?
Yes.
Each winery has to get a separate license from ABC to be represented there, so that is one means to track the sourcing.
Does that make sense on RSC?
Very clear.
And I just want to restate my statement of why I, councilman Hall made some good points about wine tasting only and why it's appropriate in RSC and Old Town Commercial in terms of its impact on the neighborhood. I agree with your logic on that. My step further has to do with the concept of retail diversity within the whole town. I know we have a retail diversity policy, which is successes, is up for debate, is to me the crowding out effect within, especially the RSC zone, of wine tasting rooms over time, crowding out other uses, I'm going to say it, local serving uses, sorry, that is the crux of why I believe wine tasting rooms should not be allowed, particularly within the RSC zone. That's all.
Thank you. I'm going to start first with the one point I brought up earlier about the language in the restaurant, full service. I think the language needs to be revisited about the takeout, and I'm not going to try to craft that language right now, it's just a point I'll bring up, because I do think we already have a couple existing where they aren't maybe as blatant as what you might say a drive-up window, but we do have walk-up capability, so.
If I could, I think, just so we can get some consensus, I think what staff would be looking at when we write the definition, we would use the, in other words, if the takeout, and I'm just using a concept here, is incidental. In other words, it's a full-service restaurant that offers takeout, that's not what we're trying to say, so I think we can work if that's what, I think we can hear that, and they're certainly not going to be defined as a limited service restaurant just because they have takeout, so.
Fair enough, but reading the language as stated, I think there's some.
If that's, if we're hitting on your cylinders, we can take care of that.
Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Well, I want to agree with that on item E, I didn't make a note in that. And I guess my question, again, just food for thought, whether that E item needs to be massaged, or whether it shouldn't even be taken out at all. I mean, I'm not sure that that is the most important of all of these, so, thank you.
Thank you. So then I'll just run down, I don't see any need to merge the definitions that you've crafted. This is kind of an ongoing, almost a test case, so I think we can leave them separate and see how the definitions apply. We may need to be tweaking them as we go. I'm fine with using occupancy as the primary standard. I like the hybrid idea of trying to figure out, I don't know if 250 square feet per parking space is the number, I would defer to staff's expertise on that. I do feel absolutely we should require mobile vendors to have minimum parking requirements. They have an impact on whatever the neighborhood is they're in. They already have the luxury of not having to comply with zoning and design review restrictions because they don't have a building, but they certainly have an impact on a neighborhood or a parking lot. And five, if that's your recommendation, that's fine with me. The fruit source is a more challenging one, and I agree with the vice mayor about the enforceability of that, even given certain permitting. I know of many wineries that source Napa and Sonoma fruit, for example, and they might make the exact same varietal using different sources. Does that mean they can't serve the Sonoma wines there if it's over 25% of their production? The intent, I support keeping it in the valley, the Napa Valley. Enforcement, I agree, is a problem, and also just knowing that some folks that are looking to places like Yountville to have a tasting room is because they have no facility in the county to use, and that might also mean they have no estate, so they're buying their fruit, and it's more likely they are going to have to source from a variety of places. So I'm unsettled on that part right now. 75% sounds good, but I don't know that it's appropriate, and we might have unintended consequences about chasing away somebody who we consider a neighbor, well-intentioned neighbor, and then this is an unfair burden on them. So maybe a little more analysis of that point, but I do think encouraging local sourcing is a good idea in the sense that bigger production, winery facilities that might have greater variety outside of Napa Valley, they have their space out in the county or in a larger place like Napa, so I'm comfortable with that. Do you need any additional guidance from us?
No, those were great comments.
Do you like less guidance from us?
No, perfect.
Too late. Okay, I think we've certainly given that one start to finish. Thank you very much for that. Let's quickly move on to item 10B, Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency, Napa County Commission for Arts and Culture. And Vice Mayor Chilton's name is in the title, does that mean you're giving the staff report or is there a?
Looking at Steve, the answer apparently is yes. And I'm happy to get comments, obviously, on even the discussion and how that should unfold. I bring this item up at the last NCTPA meeting in February, I attended, and councilwoman Mueller attended in place of the mayor. The topic of the Napa County Commission for Arts and Culture, which is an advisory body to the NCTPA, NCTPA is Napa County Transportation Planning Agency. NCTPA is a joint powers agency of the six jurisdictions of Napa County for transit services. We are speaking about the Arts and Culture Commission that reports to the Transit Agency. This has come up repeatedly in the last year. The NCCAC was formed in 2007, back when there were several different structures being looked at Napa County for doing countywide planning and jurisdictional issues, and this was one of the first outcomes of that. Four years down the road, the Arts Commission, and this is not the Arts Council Napa Valley, which is an independent nonprofit organization, the Arts Commission has no funding established currently through NCPA because NCPA cannot take money out of its own budget, it doesn't have the jurisdictional authority to do so, and there has not been funding that has come from the different jurisdictions. That came up last year, several, two of the jurisdictions, Napa County and Signalina, put in a nominal amount, and there's an attachment here that talks about that request for funding. It's never proceeded past that point, and a request was made at the last meeting to allow the Arts Commission to look at alternative governance structures for itself because it felt, the members felt that they were constrained by the charge of the Transit Agency, and they wanted to look at the potential of a, the two scenarios, you can correct me, councilwoman Mueller, were a hybrid public commission, private entity, which is complex, or a spin-out to a independent 501(c)(3). There's also another idea of whether this commission should be moved out of the NCTPA's jurisdiction to another jurisdiction, the most obvious one being either Napa County, which has provided, I shouldn't, I don't want to say that actually, because it's not correct, they haven't provided funding to use the commission, or the city of Napa as a secondary item. So what's been requested, we had a long conversation, we actually had 20 or 30 people show up to NCTPA meeting, which is very unusual, and we had six or seven public comments, which is even more unusual, and what was decided out of that is to take this item back to the different jurisdictions and simply discuss what each jurisdiction thought about A, and I've listed them here, there's a couple of questions that were talked about. Is there a need for a countywide arts commission? If so, is NCTPA the right place for it? Would there be any support for funding from the town of Yountville for an arts commission? Should the NCCAC, if it should exist in the first place, look at alternative governance structures, et cetera? If you want to add anything, this has been going on for a long time, it is kind of complex. The Arts Council had quite a few people who showed up because they felt that after having been the agency that helped form this commission, that now the commission is intending to spin out and be what would, I'm in a commentary here, most likely be in somewhat of a competitive situation with Arts Council. So that's one of the big questions that's come up. The initial charge of the Arts Commission was to look at governmental issues within the arts, as opposed to being an arts organization that makes art happen, and there's some conflict of whether there's a need for that or whether the commission thinks that's interesting enough for them to be involved in. You want to add anything from that meeting, Marjorie?
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, there was, actually, there was, I personally felt quite a bit of animosity between the Arts Council Napa Valley and the Napa Valley Arts Commission. The Napa County, and both of these are countywide organizations meant to serve the county, so I just wanted to make that very clear because I was a little confused about that in the beginning. The Art Council Napa Valley was established by the Board of Supervisors and was giving funding and was giving very specific objectives. They were to come up with a five-year strategic plan. With some of those fundings, they have actually hired full-time headcount, and I think that might actually be part of the conflict with some of this funding, that they need, you know, that continued funding to maintain their full-time FTEs. They have also, that came out in public comments, suggested that the Napa County Arts Commission actually be their Board of Directors, but because they don't seem to be able to communicate very well together, for whatever reason, there really isn't a real discussion going on there, and I thought that seemed to be a pretty reasonable way to kind of resolve these two groups. Why there really are two groups, I think councilmember Chilton mentioned a little bit, but I am still very confused why there are these two groups, and why there is a Napa County Arts, why the commission is within, you know, the board that works about potholes and buses makes even less sense to me at all. I mean, you know, we, maybe they can figure out, you know, what kind of tile we should have on the sound walls, but it's just not fitting. And even last year, when I, I think the other time I was at the NCTPA meeting, we were going through all the different groups' goals and objectives, and theirs were, they did not come together as a group, they each sent in a few, they were totally rejected, we don't even really know what they're going to do. So there's just a lot of confusion about having these two entities, and why one is within NCTPA and the other one isn't. So that's pretty much additional information that I know about the two groups. So, I don't know, maybe councilmember Dornbecker knows more about, I don't know.
Well, I'll be asking for comments from the rest of the council. Just a quick clarification, it is Transportation and Planning Agency, and planning goes toward, you know, various activities throughout the county and the various municipalities, so I think there is some, some on the NCTPA feel that it is appropriate under that jurisdiction. It's not pure, it's not a pure transportation agency, but there is some discrepancy whether it's appropriate to have this arts commission. And also, it's on tomorrow's agenda for the NCTPA, so it's not coming back in March, it's coming back tomorrow, and so we'll be, the timeliness of this conversation is obviously very appropriate. So, councilmember Hall, could I get your comments as it pertains to your views?
Yeah, I guess I should talk to the microphone. First of all, I'd like to just state that we had a person present to the council back on November 16th, in the minutes, Diane Dame Shapley, actually, personally, came here and presented to the council before I was on it. I do find it, and I recognize Mayor Dunbar, that this is probably the best for this because of the planning perspective, I find it also strange that the Napa County Arts Commission is on the planning, Transportation and Planning Commission, but stranger things have happened. I can't think of any off the top of my head, but I'm sure that that occurs in government. I don't necessarily know or would make a recommendation from Yountville as far as what our position on that council and all these different directives are, other than to say, I don't know that it's the, you know, I don't know whether it makes sense for them to spin off and go into their own group, I don't know, I don't believe that Yountville should take it under its own wing to suggest or fund an organization like this that's still in some ways trying to define and understand what its mission will be. I think we've got our own Arts Council within the town of Yountville that we are quite supportive of, and I would like to assume that we would continue that. But that being said, I, you know, I also, I just find it strange that this relationship between the sub-entity and the primary entity is coming to a head and it's being pushed out because it's a countywide issue, but I, because it's a countywide commission that is being pushed back to the individual jurisdictions to come up with direction or support or no support thereof is a little perplexing, only because I don't know, and perhaps staff can assist me in telling me or giving me guidance as to what information has been provided by NCACC before, and has it really done anything for Yountville, has it done anything for the greater community at large? Because I don't have the specifics of that.
I think there's a broader question, which is, for example, several communities do have their own arts entity. One of the questions, and it's phrased by the vice mayor's comments, is, and I got myself in trouble, as some of you may recall, about 18 months ago, because my premise was, if it walks, talks, looks like a county commission, then it should be funded by the county, staffed by the county, the same way the town of Yountville staffs and supports the various public bodies and commissions. The newest situation or conflict with the changed roles of the Arts Council Napa Valley and the county cultural arts commission is actually relatively new, and that's an emerging. I think the framework here is what you have is the county, and I'm going to call it the county commission, has been principally appointed by five members of the Board of Supervisors, and then they've had an appointment from each of the jurisdictions. So it's generally walked, talked, and looked like a county commission. It was, for lack of a better word, pushed or moved into NCTPA at a point in time about five to six years ago in some of the transition, and hasn't been staffed and supported appropriately, and I use the word appropriately, and I'm not being negative of NCTPA staff, but it's not consistent within their core mission and. not consistent within their core mission and their talents and strengths of the staff that were there. And that's been a source of frustration amongst the County Commission members as well as NCTPA staff. So, there's still a broader question, which is, what's the body? What's it supposed to do and whose is home?
Right. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Well, I was wondering, I'd like to clarify, Louis, Councilmember Chilton, did you say that the Arts Council Napa Valley is the body that brought it to the NCTPA? I thought I heard you say that.
Well, let me back up on that. The scenario, the town manager just laid out, which is a Napa, County of Napa governmental entity-driven formation within NCTPA is absolutely correct. What happened the first two years of it was there was no, A, no funding within NCTPA, and it kind of goes to my question of, my point at number five, is that the joint powers agreement doesn't actually give any authority to NCPA staff, which is also a problem to deal with arts issues, that Arts Council Napa Valley provided that level of support. So, they had somebody who was on their staff that allowed them, that helped them with, you know, meetings and minutes and giving them copier time and et cetera. That ended two years ago when, and I can only speak from what I understand, and Marjorie talked about the friction, there really kind of became a lot of friction of, and I made these comments at NCPA, there was very little guidance given to this commission about what its goals and purpose should be. And they said, why don't you go out there and tell us what you want? And that ensued on a multi-year disagreement about what that is. And eventually the Arts Council said, we've got our own funding problems, we're done with this.
I see.
Does that answer your question?
Well...
Kind of.
So, the Arts Council Napa Valley didn't present this to the...
They supported it.
They supported it, but they didn't present it. And so, part of the, I'm thinking that part of the friction is because the Arts Council Napa Valley has been in existence for so much longer and it's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And then again, the Napa Commission for Arts and Culture, Napa County Commission for Arts and Culture was under the auspices of the Board of Supervisors?
Not formally.
Not formally. Well, I, you know, I don't believe that it is in our interest nor our ability to resolve the conflict for them. And as far as I noted, I did read through and saw that they were asking for funding, are they still asking for that level of funding?
Not actively.
But I guess that has to be taken care of at the NCTPA level before it can be brought back to us and asked us to resolve anything, really. I'm very sorry because I think that, I was here also at that town council meeting and I do know a member of the, one of the members of the Napa County Commission for Arts and Culture, but I, you know, there's nothing we can do about this dilemma, as far as I can see.
Thank you. And I will just continue that thought. I think that, I'll be interested to hear what the discussion is tomorrow at the NCTPA meeting. I question fundamentally the appropriateness of this with, within jurisdiction of the NCTPA. I also question the focus of this. Sounds like we're being asked to figure out why they created this commission in the first place and find a cause and then find funding, and it seems backwards to me. There isn't a need that was identified, a commission formed and then a plan of action. It's backwards. It's, we've got this commission, now let's figure out what we want them to do. That's even before you get into the fact that there's already a county agency or the Arts Council that does exist, that we, at least here in Yountville, have our own very successful local arts effort going on. Nowhere in this, I don't know where the Destination Council lands on all this and their efforts to promote all things Napa Valley, not just the arts. I just feel like there are probably other agencies, whether they be governmental or otherwise, that would likely be more appropriate. So, I'll just reserve the rest of my comments for tomorrow's meeting, but yeah, final comment?
Can I ask one question? And that is that I remember at the presentation that was given that the NCCAC, the Napa County Commission for Arts and Culture, was expecting to receive money from the T-bid that they would be then re-granting, but that didn't happen. Is that okay?
Yes, please.
The money wasn't from the T-bid. That, there was a re-granting program. There was funding that was established from the County of Napa. It was $100,000 and they went through what they called the re-granting process where the Arts Commission went through the grant funding process, but the money and the actual authority still stayed with the Board of Supervisors. So, they weren't given that money. So, the, it's almost like there was new life breathed into this organization. The political complication that caused the extra friction was that $100,000 for the last three years was given to Arts Council Napa Valley to implement the cultural plan, which was at the behest of the County of Napa. So, that's...
And can I make a comment to follow up on yours?
Sure.
I think one of the things to get, the idea that we should resolve it here, I don't think that's what's being asked. I think the question really has to do with, I mean, the fact that we can't, A, enunciate what the, as you said, we've kind of gone backwards. Here's the need, this is what this commission is for, and it's four years into it. My real question and thing that I have said repeatedly is, I don't believe that this commission makes sense within NCTPA as a transit agency whose only jurisdiction that we have given up our, we could have our own transit agency here, but we don't for very obvious reasons. But they don't have any jurisdictional authority over arts. I would have said that I believe that this commission should not exist under NCPA. If the County of Napa wants to pick it up, that's great. If they want to figure out how to form their own citizens group, that's great. But from NCPA's perspective, we need to be running the best transit system we can, not spending staff time on that. So, I, that's been my position as a member of NCPA. If people have different opinions on that specific issue, we're here to hear it.
Right. And to that, I was about to offer, even before the arm went up, any members of the public, if you'd like to comment. And I see one of our local arts steering committee members. Yes, please.
Rob Winterberg for Yountville Arts Subcommittee, I don't know what her name is at this point. Yountville Arts, let's go with that. I wasn't actually expecting to talk about this, and it's unfortunate that it's tomorrow because I want to encourage you guys, since we will be actively working with these groups, these groups, it'd be great if it would be something that could come up on our agenda for our monthly meetings so that the local arts committee could also discuss it and maybe give some added feedback to the council. So, I think that'd be a great opportunity for us to, for you guys to actually use this because I hear a lot of people saying, I don't know where this came from, I don't know. And quite frankly, I don't, but some of the other people on my committee do. And it'd be great to get some of that feedback since we have to continually work with them. They want money from us, we want money from them, all these different things. And it'd be a way for us to also provide some feedback. It sounds like this is, you guys are on track for everything else, but I just wanted to give that a little bit in there as well.
Thank you very much. And understandably, short notice with the meeting tomorrow at 1:30, but I certainly, if you are, and I can also reach out to some of the other members of the steering committee, our local steering committee, if there's, certainly with Judith Caldwell previously being on the Arts Council, to get a little bit more background so that we can go in and represent our interests as it pertains to the NCTPA tomorrow. So, are there any final wrap-up comments?
One thing about the fact this meeting is tomorrow, I'm very confident, I wrote this statement before the agenda came out, that we said we were going to bring it back in March. And I did see the agenda later, was that your recollection? That would give that month of time and then come back in March. And I know it's a discussion item tomorrow as well, but that's why there's, there's supposed to be more time.
That's exactly right. I mean, there was even some discussion about, you know, more time than that.
Like June, yeah.
Yeah, you know, to, so everyone could really get their comment. Because I think the critical part is that, you know, we were talking about, here it is at NCTPA, but the Board of NCTPA is two members from each jurisdiction. So, in a way, it is us. We can't just say, make them do it because we are them. And that's why, I think it is kind of appropriate to, even though there's a lot of information we really don't have, to kind of express our opinions about what is best. I mean, because I also think that the main argument when I've talked to some of the supervisors is why they are even in NCTPA was, that's the only organization where there are representatives from each of the jurisdictions. Okay, that makes sense, but there are so many other county boards. If that's the rationale, then how come they're not all assigned to NCTPA? So, it, you know, the shoe just doesn't fit for all the other ones as well. So, my personal opinion is I just don't think it belongs in NCTPA. They've been wrestling with for even last year and before that, what are they supposed to do? They can't really put it together themselves. NCTPA, which is all of us, can't figure it out. So, I mean, there's a lot of other really important things we have to deal with, you know, at our level and the county level and, you know, worrying about that just doesn't seem to be where we should be putting our efforts. I mean, putting that much time into figuring out what someone should be doing when we don't know. I say, cut it off.
And Vice Mayor Chilton and I will be representing our interests tomorrow at that meeting. So, thank you all for your comments, so we have a little more background on that. And it may be an informational discussion item tomorrow and not an action item. I don't remember specifically, so we'll certainly report out on that. Let's move on to item 11, staff informational reports. I see we do have a couple.
Those are there. They're simply a reminder, informational items are there for your review. We aren't going to give a presentation. If you have any questions on those two items, we're happy to do that.
Any questions from council on either of the reports? Seeing none, we'll move right on to council reports. We'll start first with reports before we do comments. Let's see, what do we have? Tomorrow's the, let's see, there was no flood control today. Tomorrow is our NCTPA. Do we have a local agency formation commission of Napa County report?
Actually, no, we don't. I was unable to attend LAFCO a week ago Monday and the representative from American Canyon. Joan Bennett was, took my spot. There was one minor annexation item on the agenda, but nothing significant to report.
Thank you. Then, specific council comments. Councilmember Dornbecker, do you have any particular comments or any other issues to cover?
I'm sorry, I don't, thank you.
It's quite all right. Your voice made it all the way through the meeting. Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, just one brief one, and that is, I've been in contact with, thanks to Councilmember Muller, the Watershed Information, it's Watershed Information Conservation Commission, and they are in the process right now of setting up a symposium for this year and they're planning on at least applying to use or have use of the Yountville Community Centers. So, this might be a neat opportunity for us to have this symposium here in town. I don't know if the application's been submitted yet, but I was just advised of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Muller, any comments?
No.
Vice Mayor?
I'll make one comment slash advertisement, and we do have another meeting on March 1st, but tickets are on sale for the Yountville Elementary Schools Annual Fundraiser on Saturday, March 12th. You can go to the PTA's website at yespta.com. If that doesn't work, go to org, but I'm almost, I'm pretty confident it's .com. There are tickets available for that. Proceeds from that event primarily support the educational programs at the school. The Yountville School Foundation is also involved, I guess is for Planning Department, the ancillary use of that is also involved in a couple of the items to raise some funds for keeping the school open. But most of the funds that were raised from that event will go for the school's library, educational and instructional support, et cetera. So, go ahead and get your tickets out.
Thank you. And one item of the future, I'll just remind folks, March 19th, Taste of Yountville. So, if you haven't already volunteered, we're encouraging you to do so. It should be a great time, it always is, and it won't rain, of course. Also, I just wanted to recognize the fact that we, the town and the council held an appreciation dinner for all of our commissioners and volunteers throughout town. We had a very, a great turnout. Over in the community hall, the Native Daughters of the Golden West did a great job, as they always do, cooking us a great meal. The entire council was there, many members of the town staff. So, thank you to all of the, our community members that are participating on our commissions. I see our, well, most of our remaining audience members are on said commissions, and thank you again for your support. And all of our audience are active volunteers throughout town, so thank you for that. We will then move on to future agenda items. All right, we'll move right on.
No, just a second. Future agenda items are just, again, a prelude to what's coming.
I didn't know if you wanted to highlight anything. No, I'll move right on to closed session. Do we have any need?
We have no need tonight, ma'am.
And we'll move right on to item 15, adjournments.
Some moves.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Thank you very much.